Good evening. I'll call the meeting to order at this time. If you will, please rise for the invocation and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance. I'll call on Councilman David Barber if he will lead us into invocation.
Dear Lord, we're so thankful we have this opportunity. We can come to this group here, Lord. We can exercise the business of the town of Smithfield. We're so thankful for the privileges that we have as a free society to be able to do these things. We pray, Lord, that you would guide us, help us to make the right decisions for the right reasons that benefit the people. Lord, help us do the things that would be worthy of being servants, not just for the town of Smithfield, but for you. First in your name, we pray it. Amen.
Before we get started this evening, our clerk Shannon is out sick this evening. So Mike, we want to introduce our temporary clerk for this evening.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, we have Julie Edmonds back here. She's been appointed as our interim deputy clerk for the purpose of this meeting, and we appreciate her filling in. She does all the planning board minutes and Board of Justice minutes as it is. So she knows what the story is and do us a good job tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Julie, we'll try to have you out of here by maybe one. One a.m. I can't promise midnight. I think the last meeting it was one. So before we approve the agenda, I did want to say that due to the increase in COVID-19 cases, you can see we are doing things a little different this evening. We are taking temperatures on the way in. We have sanitized the room, and we are strictly limiting the number of people inside the room, as well as trying to practice our social distancing. So I'll ask during any public hearings, when you come forward, if you'll come forward to this center mic, please try not to touch the mic. There's hand sanitizer up here as well if you'd like to use the hand sanitizer. Again, we're just trying to do, trying to practice all the precautions that we can to keep the town staff, as well as the town council, as well as our citizens and our partners, safe. So thank you very much for abiding by our rules, I guess. So with that, gentlemen, we do have the agenda. There are a couple of known changes that I have on the agenda. We do need to remove the minutes from the consent agenda, which is in particular to add some additional language to the Camden Ranch easement, which was business item number three on page 66 of the agenda. We do need to move that, we can move that to business item number one, because we do need to remove business item number one, which is an update on the drone program, and that was supposed to be given by Tim Kerrigan, and Tim could not be with us this evening. So those are about two known changes to the agenda. Do we have any others?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like for us to move to do a, for business item number five, the amendment to the UDO. I'd like us to move that to a separate call meeting, I believe, perhaps December the 7th at 6:30, for the whole purpose, simply for no purpose, but just to go through the amendments for the UDO. That's business item number five.
Any issues with that, gentlemen? If we recess this meeting to December the 7th at 6:30 to discuss the amendments to the UDO, specifically just the UDO, any issues for you guys? Okay. So what we will do, once we approve this, is at the end of this meeting, we will recess the meeting until December the 7th at 6:30. I think that is all the known changes that I have at present. I have a motion to accept the agenda as amended.
Second.
A motion by Councilman Rabel and a second by Councilman Barber. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Okay. First off, this evening is, we do have a couple of presentations. The first one being the acceptance of the 2020 North Carolina American Water Works Association and Water Environment Federation Award for Potable Water Distribution System of the Year. Is Adam here? Adam, if you'll come forward. Ted, I will turn it over to you, sir, if you will walk us through that presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, citizens. North Carolina American Water Works Association, WEF, is a state organization, or a state chapter of a national organization. Annually, they award one water system in the state of North Carolina, one large system, one medium system, and one small system, as the Distribution System of the Year. And Smithfield has won this, was elected to win this for the fourth consecutive year for small systems. So I'll read the little thing, and I just wanted to congratulate Adam and the crew. Well, let me read through it. "The purpose of the North Carolina Water Distribution System of the Year Award is to identify and recognize the municipality that protects the public health through proactive practices of management, operations, and maintenance of their water distribution system beyond minimum standards. To assist in these efforts, the Water Distribution System Committee shall annually recognize systems in North Carolina based on the size of their system. In 2020, only three systems were selected, and for the fourth consecutive year, the town of Smithfield has won the category. Recipients of the award will have demonstrated they are to perform quality water system maintenance procedures through the efficient use of labor, materials, equipment, and innovative methods to keep their distribution system in good working condition to minimize health hazards. The award honors the system's personnel that serve their community with a high level professionalism and diligent work in the operation and maintenance of their water distribution system facilities. The recipient's staffs make the most of their available resources, no matter how great or small." So for the town of Smithfield, we award them the honor.
Adam, Ted, outstanding job. Please pass this along to your staff and the entire crew. Most appreciative, but outstanding job.
Well, when good things happen, they continue to happen. So, once again, now we've gone from distribution, which is water, to collection, which is sewer. And the purpose of the award is to identify and recognize municipalities that protect the public health and the natural beauty of the environment through proactive practices of management, operations, and maintenance beyond what is required. To assist in these efforts, the committee annually recognizes three wastewater systems based on size, small, medium, and large. For the fourth consecutive year, again, the town of Smithfield has won the small-size category. Recipients of the award for collections will have demonstrated they perform quality system maintenance procedures through the efficient use of labor, materials, equipment, and innovative methods to keep their collection system in good working condition to minimize health hazards and property damage that occur due to sanitary sewer overflows during wet and dry weather conditions. This award honors the collection system personnel that serve their community with a high level professionalism, diligent work in the operation and maintenance of their wastewater collection system facilities. The recipient's staff prove themselves to make the most of their available resources, no matter how great or small. So for the fourth year in a row, Smithfield won small again.
Now we'll move on to our third presentation, which is the Fiscal Year 2019-2020 Annual Audit. Greg, I'll turn that over to you, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, Council, town manager, it gives me a great honor tonight to be able to present to you the findings or outcome of our FY 1920 audit. As you all know, an audit is required to be had annually by the state of North Carolina. To present our findings, we have with us Alan Thompson. Alan Thompson is a partner with auditing firm Thompson Price Scott Adams and Company, P.A. And so without further ado, I'll let Mr. Thompson present to you findings of our audit.
Thank you. Good evening to everyone. In front of you, you should have a copy of the full audit, as well as a copy of the presentation summary, and I think we're going to have that on monitors as well. If you'd be kind enough to flip over to page one, I'm going to read a couple of things, just so I'm in compliance here. But there were no significant audit findings on page one, no difficulties encountered in page two, no uncorrected misstatements, no disagreements with management. Management did provide us with a representation letter dated October 22. We're unaware that management consulted with any outside accountants, auditors, et cetera. A couple of findings there, and findings is probably the wrong word, a couple of comments to the board or to the finance group, nothing significant, because the main reason you hire us is to issue an opinion on the financial statements. We did issue an opinion. It's an unmodified report, which is a quote-unquote "good report," clean report, with no financial statement findings, or compliance findings on any grant or state, federal funds you did receive. If you flip over to page four, I'm going to run through the numbers. The way it's presented here, I don't attempt to say these are all the key numbers, but these are numbers we get asked about a lot. So the purpose here is to pull out some of those numbers and put them in a summary format like this, and then put the four previous years' report numbers right beside it, so that you get a better context. So when we say fund balance is X, it's not just a number hanging out there. You can look back over the previous four years and see where that number has come from. And when you look at the top number there, total fund balance in general fund, you see $14,521. You look back to 2016, you see $8,913, so a significant increase there. You look next, unavailable fund balance, $2,720, restricted and committed, and assigned fund balance at $4,553. Total general fund expenditures, including transfers out, at $13,735,000. Fund balance available as a percentage at 85.92%. Unassigned fund balance at $9,968, and unassigned fund balance as a percentage at 72.58. So I give you two percentages there that a lot of times, local government commission may look at, et cetera. But when you look at total fund balance as a percentage of total expenditures, it's 105.73%, which is roughly, when you look at total governmental funds, which is not just general funds, it's about a 12.29% increase over last year. But total general fund percentage there is 105.73%. And then you see revenues over and under expenses before contributions and transfers. The general fund's $1,443,000 positive. The electric fund is $255,000 positive, and the water sewer fund is $2,745,000 positive. Next in there, you see the total fixed assets, accumulated appreciation in cash. The next group, you see total general fund cash at $13,072,000. You go over, and a couple of these cash numbers, you may want to go over and take a look. It was $7,901,600. Cash and electric fund is $11,020,000. Cash and water sewer fund is $12,152,000. And cash in other governmental funds is $1,074,000. We'll look at fund balance in each of those funds next. And so when you look at the fund balance, sometimes fund balance, well, not sometimes, all the time in fund balance in your water sewer, electric fund, has fixed assets. And so what you're really looking for in your proprietary funds or enterprise funds is cash flow. And when you look at cash flow in your electric fund and water sewer fund, you go back, you can see that you've got excellent cash flow, which is what you're really after in your proprietary funds. Property tax rates have been the same for all five years presented. The collection percentages at 99.61%. They've been over 99% for all years presented. Collection percentage excluding motor vehicles have been over 99% for all years presented. Then you see total property valuation, total levy amount. Then you see debt. Debt in governmental activities is $7.5 million, and the business-type activities is $4.5 million. So when you look at a health standpoint of the town, then what you would look at, in my opinion, is you look at your fund balances increasing in the three major funds here, your water sewer, electric, and your general fund, for all years presented. And then your debt is going down in all years presented, which is healthy. So cash going up, fund balance going up, debt going down. That's what you're after, from a financial standpoint. On page five, you see your total breakdown of your general fund revenues by department and a total breakdown of your general fund expenditures by department. And we'll look at percentages on those in just a second. On page six, you can see the chart there, where total fund balance in blue is going up for all years presented, restricted and assigned fund balance in red. On the bottom there, you see analysis of fund balance available in blue, and the group-weighted average there in red. On page seven, you see analysis of unassigned fund balances, a percentage on the top, and then the analysis of revenues over and under expenses before transfers, contributions on the bottom, with all funds positive for the current and the previous three years. And on page eight, you see your cash and accumulated appreciation for the water sewer fund there. On the bottom of that page, you see in pie chart the analysis of cash and fund balances for each of those three funds I just mentioned, with the respective grand totals and individual totals underneath those. And on page nine, you see the property tax rate steady for all years there for the town, and the group-weighted average underneath that. And then the collection percentage, you can see where Smithfield exceeds both the group-weighted average and the statewide average. And on page 10, you see the total property value and the levy amounts on top. On the bottom there, you see the breakdown of your general fund revenue by percentage, and you can see why we always talk about property taxes, because ad valorem taxes make up 49.53% of the total revenue of the general fund. And then on the final page, you see the general fund expenditures, with the greatest one there being public safety at 45.58%. Again, the takeaway that I would like to leave you with, clean report, no findings, general fund rising, cash rising, debt going down. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions you got, not just tonight, but if you take the audit report home and read it and fall asleep and have questions, you're welcome to call my office anytime. If I happen to be out of the office, tell them to give you my cell number. I'll get you an answer to your question. And we really appreciate all the help and assistance we got from your finance department, from all the staff. They were great, and we appreciate you allowing us to do the audit report.
Any questions on the audit? I know it's a lot to, we just are receiving this, so it's a lot to digest, so I'm sure...
It is. And I see Councilman Dunn working his...
Councilman Dunn is figuring here. That's why I was, I was pausing to see if he had a question or not at this moment, or if he's just double-checking the numbers on his colleague here.
I have one question.
Yes, sir.
I'm just curious. I know you said on page two, you've got the second bullet under items that should be addressed. It says the town needs to review its aged accounts receivable balance to determine those accounts being uncollectible. Do you know how many aged accounts that we actually have that falls in that category? I mean, look, we have a pretty good collection, percentage of collection anyway, so I'm not sure. And I think we've had some discussions, you know, I know, and because of the COVID situation we had this year, obviously, we've been, the town, which is understanding, is very lenient on collecting certain things to ensure people can live.
Yes, sir.
So is that a factor in this report here, or is those accounts beyond that, that's something, you see what I mean? Because if you say, I'm, I'm trying to explain my inquiry. So if the issue is a result of the situation we're currently in with this pandemic, that we can't control, per se, that we know we're coming out of, hopefully within the next year, right, six months to a year, then that's not as pressing on us if that's where the issues are coming from. But if the issue is not associated with that, but a systemic issue beyond that, then that's an, you see my point? That's what I want to know.
I understand your point. It's not a systemic issue, but it is something that, if I were in your position, I would be slow to write them off, too, because you want to make sure if somebody moves around, that when they come back to reconnect, you still got an easy way to find them. So I get that. But at the same time, as an auditor, they get a certain age, we want to see them written off. So, but it's not, the COVID issue was taken into account, and we don't see this as a major issue. Otherwise, we'd have had a finding and not just a comment in this presentation. So again, there were no findings, quote, in your financial statement.
Any other questions at this time?
I have one more, I guess. My question is, when I'm looking at the fund balance on page six of the chart, it shows that the fund balance for 2020 is 85.92%.
Yes, sir.
Whereas last year was at 90.66%.
Yes, sir.
So you made the statement that our fund balance is going up.
Yes, sir.
The money that's in the fund balance is going up, but not the percentage of the fund balance in comparison to our, whatever it's balanced with. Am I right?
I'll try to be succinct as I can, but if on page 14 of your audit report, the larger report, because you could see from page four, that when you looked across from 2019 to 2020, that total fund balance in the general fund went from $13,832 up to $14,521. And the percentage that you're talking about is fund balance available. And I don't have the calculation we use exactly here, but when you look down at available, it could be changed by any of the numbers there in that first column on page four, when it says fund balances, on that first column, where it starts out with $53,729. Those items make up the total fund balance. And if the, if you had an amount in there for, that was accounts receivable, your accounts receivable may have been higher this year than last year, then that might play into how much is available or assigned. Or if you budgeted more out of fund balance, it could have an impact on that percentage, even though your total fund balance percentage is higher. The components of it could be different year over year. And so that's, from a total perspective, you know, and I apologize if I'm giving you more than you want, but, you know, the state statute says you've got to have a minimum of 8.33% or basically one month in your general fund. So the town is so far stronger than that, that it's not really a question. The components here are going to vary every year based on where the receivables are, what you may have reserved that's in general fund, to spend for a specific purpose, or what you may budget for the succeeding year. I'm hoping I'm answering your question.
Your honor, so my question maybe goes over to Greg to ask him, do you know...
I can add to what Alan has.
Go ahead, please.
So fund balance is calculated based on cash on hand, but it's also calculated based on expenditures for the current year. So last year, we transferred over a million dollars from the general fund, fund balance, if you will, to aid in capital projects, monies that we didn't have to borrow. So our expenses went up, therefore, our fund balance comes down. Does that help?
Okay. That's not necessarily a bad thing, right? Because it says that we're, I mean, the question is, how much is too much? I mean, there's always a point, I always have this discussion with people that I work with, because we have a, we have an organization, and you won't help the organization, but you're not about keeping money in the bank. That's not what you're there for. You're there to help the people who you are, you know, who are putting money into that account. And so just having a healthy bank account, that's not the objective. The objective is servicing the needs of the community. And so what you're saying, this shows an example of where, in this case, we've done that, and we would expect some of that money to come down because of that. Is that what you're saying?
That's a good way to put it.
Okay. I understand. Thank you. So it's a positive thing, not a negative thing, that's my point. Okay.
Any other questions? I'm sure we'll take some time and read through this. I'm sure there will be questions. So we'll get with Greg and Mike, and if they can't answer them, then we'll get with you. But thank you for coming this evening and sharing the audit with us. It's outstanding news, and thanks to the council and the staff for all the good work.
Thank you, sir.
Now we'll move on to our public hearings. All right. So our first public hearing is RZ-20-07, East River PUD. This is not a quasi-judicial hearing, so therefore, there is no need for anyone to be sworn in at this time. The applicant is requesting substantial changes to the previously approved East River planned unit development master plan. The subject property is located on the east and west side of Buffalo Road, approximately 490 feet north of its intersection with M. Durwood Stevenson Parkway. Property is further identified as Johnston County Tax ID 14075013. It's found on page 11 of your agenda. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
So move.
Motion and a second by Councilman Wood. All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Steven, I'll turn it over to you, sir.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So everyone's pretty familiar with the location of East River. This is a planned unit development. Phases one and two are already in construction and have received final plat. You can see phase one here on the GIS drawing. Phase two is not shown. Property to the south is R28 agricultural residential, same to the north. And there's a B3 to the south on the east side of Buffalo Road, and that is the credit union. And then to the east side of furthest extent of the PUD is an R10 residential zoning, and currently is just agricultural and forestry. The mayor covered most of this. So it's a mixed residential PUD. There is some news river buffer and a blue line stream on the property. All the utilities are Thomas Smithfield. So back in 2018, the town reviewed the... So, back in 2018, the town reviewed the original PUD master plan for the site, and this is what it was. Two hundred and eighty single-family homes, including up to seventy-six attached single-family units, which are triplexes, and then thirty-five townhomes located on the east side of Buffalo Road. So, that was what was approved originally. Last year, or earlier in the year, I guess it was, there was an issue with the planned storm pond, which was in the news buffer. DEQ did not allow that to go forward as planned. So, they redesigned the stormwater, and you can see, and if you guys remember, the park spaces in between the rows of homes here became stormwater ponds. And there was a bit of an issue by the council and the planning board, and not sure if that was the best idea. That plan got approved, but as it turns out, the stormwater plan really didn't work still. And Reed, Reed Smith had, has hired David DeYoung, and David DeYoung has hired a new team to redesign the site, and that's why they're here tonight. So, we have a third revision, which has moved the stormwater back towards the river, but not in the news buffer, so it's in the open space. They've incorporated a, kind of a focal point to the whole development, which I think is a fantastic idea, which is a central park, sort of brings community to the whole development. The area in blue around the central park is where the townhomes are organized, which is, again, a, a better design element. You've got the density around the open space, and then you've got the single-family homes on the outside. The other part of the change here is all the townhomes are now on the east side of Buffalo Road. Again, probably a better move. The different parts of the development are clearly identified and distinct. And I'll, I'll get into this more. So, the, this submittal has two hundred and ninety-three residential lots. Hundred and sixty-eight are now detached single-family, sixty are single-family triplex, and sixty-five are townhouse lots. So, the townhouses have gone up in number, single-family slightly down. And the triplex lots are kind of what was originally proposed, they said up to seventy-five, so it's within the, the original plans. The phasing for this development has gone from nine phases down to seven. Phases one and two are under construction and are not affected by the change at all. The PUD plan alters stormwater management, as I said earlier, adds a new central park feature, a new mail, mail kiosk area in the park, guest parking for the triplex lots, which was an issue all along, that is now being provided around that central park feature. So, there, there's on-street parking all the way around the central park, which provides that relief. And it improves the routing of the greenway away from the cul-de-sac and pump station, which was an issue staff had early on in, in the second phase as well, or second revision as well. Just a point of, of notice here, there was a master, there was a reimbursement agreement with the developer, and with this change, that will have to be reconfigured as well. And staff is working on that with the developer currently. I mentioned there's the hundred-foot news buffer, that is not being impacted by, by the changes. This is a reminder, this whole development is within the watershed protection overlay district, and so that, there is open space along the river trying to shift development away from, from that area. Allows up to seventy-five percent impervious. And the master, the watershed requires cluster provisions, and in a sense, this PUD is a cluster, a cluster subdivision, I should say, with some exceptions. And it, and the exceptions are lot size, lot width, setbacks, and building separation, which is all the same that was originally proposed, no changes in this PUD, but those were original exceptions that were made by the town council. Access has changed. Originally, there were two access points on, on the west side of Buffalo Road and a single access to the east side of Buffalo Road. Now, as you can see, the roads cross Buffalo Road at the same point, and there's two access points to the east side and two on the west side. The Buffalo Road right-of-way has been dedicated as required. The roads on the east side of Buffalo Road are going to be private, all going to be private road, including the parking lot. And it would be maintained by the HOA. The overall street structure has changed a little bit around the central park. The outer loop road remains sixty feet in width. The roads themselves are twenty-foot wide with Monewell Valley curb. The inner street right-of-way is fifty feet wide. As I said earlier, phases six and seven are all now townhomes, and that will require a separate special use permit approval. I already mentioned the streets. Sidewalks are shown on both sides of every street, which is consistent with the original PUD plans. Sidewalks are required along Buffalo Road, but if you recall, we allowed, the town council allowed a ten-foot trail in lieu of a sidewalk, which was consistent with the kind of alternate route plans for the mountains-to-sea trail. And for some time, we believe the Buffalo Road right-of-way will be the, the route unless a riverfront route can be obtained. As currently shown, the trail on the east side of Buffalo Road is within the required street yard for the multifamily development. This will be something that will be worked out through the special use permit process. There's also a storm pond showing on the construction plans in that area, and that will also be addressed through the SUP process. So, there's still some work to do on the east side of Buffalo Road. There is a public greenway corridor running through the middle of the development, which provides public access from the road through the park to the river. And again, the, the river would be the desired mountains-to-sea route if we can connect it to adjacent properties in the future. In the meantime, they're going to be developing the trail from the south of that center trail spine that goes through the park, down around the, the SEM pond, the stormwater pond, to the cul-de-sac. So, that, portion of that greenway trail on the river will be constructed by the developer. The part to the north with the X's shown on it, that is to be built in the future if a future greenway trail continues to the north. That would likely be built by the town, maybe with grant money or other means. Just want to make that clear. So, park dedication is required with each final plat. The central park feature is going to be a private park with a public trail corridor running through the middle of it. The park master plan does not indicate a need for, for parks in this area, so no park dedication is going towards that private park feature. The development will be served by town water sewer and electrical. Wastewater flow originally was estimated to be below over thirteen thousand gallons per day. Phase one and two are gravity flow. The rest, three through five, will require a pump station to be located back behind the cul-de-sac here. That space has gotten larger with this revision. It, it's much more suited for a pump station and having access to the stormwater pond, which was a concern originally. And now, the trail, as I said before, the trail and the water runs through that area as well, it's, it's looped around. So, it's a much better plan. Just some comments here. Consideration should be made for screening the pump station from the adjacent residential properties, and that pump station will have to be, it's, it's currently being designed and will be reviewed by the town utility department for all the requirements. Stormwater management in the west side of Buffalo Road is going to be through these two stormwater ponds labeled SEM on the plan here. And there are, you can see in green, there's space cut out between the homes for an access route, so we can maintain those ponds in the future. And then, on the east side of Buffalo Road, the, there'll be additional stormwater ponds, probably yet to be figured out exactly where they're going to go. They've got one shown here between the townhouses, but they've also got one of the construction plans showing along Buffalo Road, so that, that whole part of the development still needs some work, figure out where everything's going to work, relocated. There are no specific landscape standards for single-family residence to development, but with this PUD, there was a concept plan for landscaping overall. The rise master plan shows no buffer yard or landscape yards with the multifamily development, which is required and will be addressed through the special use permit process. I just want to point out, I've, I've heard comments about where are the street lights for East River? They're in the works, they're going to be installed very soon. David Young has worked with utilities director to get that lighting installed, and lighting will be provided throughout the development. I talked about phasing. With each, each additional phase that gets final platted, those phases get added to the HOA agreement, which Bob Spence has already looked at. I talked about the overflow parking around the park. The multifamily has specific parking requirements, will be addressed through the special use permit process. I want to point out through the comprehensive plan, the plan was originally consistent with the comprehensive plan that was, we had back in 2018. The current comprehensive plan has a prohibition on, on lots that are less than forty-five feet in width. And as you recall, some of the lots in this development are, are as narrow as thirty-seven feet. But it's a, it's a conflict with the current plan, but it's conformal with the plan that was in place when this development was originally conceived. So, staff is, is, is comfortable with the, the PUD and believe it's in the spirit and the intent of the original comp plan as we move forward. So, staff has identified eight conditions of approval, some of them are carryovers from the original plat, sorry, the original PUD plan. One thing I added, landscaping, it'll be incorporated into each phase of the development consistent with the phase one landscaping, and then additional landscaping be placed along the edges of the development in phases six and seven to provide additional buffering, and that's the townhouses area. As that area is more dense, probably needs a little more buffering and certainly needs a street yard as required by code. And just pointed out, access to phases six and seven be maintained by the HOA, it's a private road, and that the application for a special use permit be submitted for the townhouse development in phases six and seven. With that, staff finds the, the development consistent with the comp plan, UDO, and surrounding land uses. Staff is recommending approval of the rezoning with eight conditions of approval, finding it consistent with the comp plan, and it's reasonable in public interest. And without other any questions.
Any questions for Stephen?
Yes, I do have a couple of questions, Stephen. When we first had this come before, so there was a question about the width of the streets and the concern for the trash trucks, fire trucks, et cetera. And at that time, the plan was to keep as much walking off the street as possible, and I think that's why the designated overflow area was to be designed as needed. Under this plan, it looks like the overflow parking is actually going to be on-street parking around the park, and no other additional overflow parking, is that correct?
That is correct. Okay. There's also, through the HOA agreement, I believe there's a restriction on parking to, what, one side of the street? Additional concession the developer had provided.
Okay, well, I'm sure they can elaborate on that then. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Stephen at this time?
I have a question. The, it's just simply because we've had this come before us before, that's why I'd rather be proactive than the reactive. We have had in the past subdivisions that have private drives and roads, and then want to come to us to support, you know, to, to take their roads on because they're not maintaining them, or they need clearing during bad weather or whatever, and so they're requesting us to do it. And our answer has to be that if they need our code, if they bring it up to the code of our requirements, then we accept them, right? So, my question is, given the, these roads here are not, it says sixty-foot wide or fifty-foot wide, I'm not really sure of that, but that's what it looked like it was saying. My question is, will these roads, will there be the ability, if in the future, the HOAs decide that they want the town of Smithfield to take over that responsibility? The roads are probably not going to be up to code, I'm going to guess, to start with, or they would give them to us to start off with. So, the, my question is, is there going to be enough room or the ability for that HOA, if in the future, they decide they want the town of Smithfield to take it on, or there to be the ability to do, you see what I'm saying? That's, that's my concern. I, you know, I don't, I understand they can make town, but I just know we've had this more than one time come to us, and I want to make sure that we do due diligence for the people that might live there in the future who might not want to maintain their own road.
Sure. I just want to go back to this. Originally, and even the first plan, originally, the, the infrastructure on the east side of Buffalo Road, they were designed as public roads, you know, they, they were streets. As you go into this version, the street very quickly becomes a parking lot, and the town doesn't have any interest in taking over parking lots. So, we made it pretty clear straight away that we did not want to have this be part of the public street infrastructure.
Can you point, give a pointer, show me what you're talking about?
Yeah.
And also, while you're doing that, Stephen, if it were deemed a parking lot, we would not be able to, to obtain any power bill fines for this.
Correct. I, I believe that is correct.
Yeah, I'm not concerned, I'm not concerned about the parking lot, I'm concerned about the entry into the parking lot, and the road, is that going to be, that's my question, is that from there to the, I don't care about parking lot, I agree with you, your life is run, you get out of the parking lot, don't get out of the parking lot.
From, from here, it goes from Buffalo Road right-of-way, immediately it goes into parking lot, there's parking. There is a section here that conceivably would be future street if it was designed to our standards, but right at this point where the red cursor is, that becomes parking lot. So, here's really the cutoff where we definitely are into parking lot. Okay, does that answer the question? The internal roads are all going to be public roads. There's no parking lot on any of the internal roads on the west side of Buffalo Road, that's all public. Private is just the stuff on the east side going to the townhouses and the parking lot.
So, my, my question, I'll go back to my original question, then. My original question is, that, because I don't see that as a park, I don't, I see the parking lot, and I see the road going to the parking lot. I don't consider the road going to the parking lot, parking lot, it's a road going to the parking lot, okay? That's, that's my view, and I'm just, I'm, I'm holding on to what I'm going to say. But my question is, so it looks like to me, though, then, if that's the only area, it looks like it has the space available, if in the future, that's what I'm looking at. I want to make sure they have the ability, not today, but in the future. I wanna make sure they have the ability, not today, but in the future, if the HOA in the future decides they want the town of Smithfield to take on that road, cause it's not a parking lot, that's a road. If they wanna take on that driveway, whatever, as maintenance, if they could, if they're, would they have the ability, at their own expense, of course, to bring it up to code so we would take it on? That's my question mark. It wasn't about whether we're doing it or not, I just wanna make sure they have the space. And it looks like to me that there is room there available for them to expand if they need to. Am I, am I not reading that right? I mean, they don't have to do it now, but I'm saying they wanna make sure they have the ability to do it. You understand?
Yes. Uh, the only thing about that segment there is it doesn't appear to have right-of-way. It, it's shown as just a, just a driveway. Um, so there would have to be right-of-way associated with it for the town to take it over. But yes, if it's, if it's a private road, it has to be built by town, to town standards, by our own UDO. So that in the future, there's no issue with taking it over if we have to.
But they could go back and bring it up to code at that point in time if they really wanted us to do it. That's my point. Not that they have to do it today, but in the future, if the HOA decides that, cause again, we've had these people come to us. You know that they have.
Yes.
Asking us that.
If there was a right-of-way.
That's okay. So there is the ability in the future, that's my question. The answer, sounds about it, the answer is yes.
Potentially, yes.
Uh, but in the future, if they so choose to do, the ability, the, the, the capability would be there for them to do it if that's something they chose to do and they chose to pay to have it done. We obviously wouldn't do it, but, and obviously the builder wouldn't do it because everybody gone to it. So, but, but they would have the ability, if the HOA people wanted to do it, they could at that point in time, if they so chose to do it, correct?
It appears as though there is space to do so.
That's what, that's what my concern was. I'm gonna make sure we didn't lock them in or something that they couldn't do anything about.
Any other questions?
Any other questions for Stephen at this time? I think there are some questions for, for the applicant. I'll ask the applicant to come forward at this time. John, I believe you, you had some, I know you had one question at least.
Mr. Mayor, can I take this time?
You certainly may, sir. If you will, please state your name and address for the record.
Reed Smith, uh, one fourteen West Main Street. First off, uh, just would like to thank y'all for hearing us tonight. Uh, and also for staff, uh, putting all this together. They have done an outstanding job, uh, through this process, through Phase One, Phase Two, and preparing for this. And especially during this crazy time of COVID. Uh, we appreciate y'all sticking to meetings and where we can do business in Smithfield and the town staff coming in and being safe. And as, it, it, you know, it's not taken for granted. We appreciate it very much. Secondly, uh, third time's a charm, and we, we appreciate y'all hearing this. Um, also appreciate the open mind. That's the last time we came. Um, we did have stormwater, uh, challenge, um, as we, we pointed out. Um, however, leaving that meeting, um, I, as the owner and developer of this project, just didn't have a good taste in my mouth on how this project went in that meeting. And, uh, just said, we, we can do better than that. And so, uh, we brought on Dave DeYoung. Um, he has brought a lot of imagination and ideas to the project. This is one of the largest residential developments in Smithfield. Um, we wanna be proud of it. Uh, we want y'all to be proud of it. Uh, when we finished the last CEO, we want the residents to be proud of it. Um, so we brought a little, uh, different approach to it. And that's why we're bringing it back to you tonight. It's no different. There's no, no reason we're here tonight other than we're just trying to make it better. And, um, some things did tweak. I think Stephen did a good job summarizing the changes and whatnot. Um, but at, at the end of the day, uh, the stormwater areas behind the houses just did not sit well with me. Um, especially after our last meeting. So we went back to the drawing board. And then we also wanted to rework the amenities to add kind of a central theme, um, to the area. Uh, the, the, the neighborhood did have to kinda condense a little bit. So we said, well, how do we, how do we offer additional amenities for the residents here? So, um, also, as we were getting into mail kiosk and things, having a central mail kiosk. Just, just little things like that, we thought would make the day-in, day-out quality of life for the residents a little better. Um, the Central Park having playgrounds for the, um, on-site for the, the children in the neighborhood, as well as a dog park, um, little pavilion for birthday parties and things like that. It just made sense to do something like that to where the people on-site could, uh, could enjoy those amenities. They can still go to the Shrak and, and use those facilities. And that's, that's still a great amenity. We just thought adding this on-site would, would, uh, would be good. So we appreciate your consideration tonight. Um, we think it's a, a great plan, um, something we can be proud of, something the town of Smithfield will be proud of. Um, Dave's gonna come up and answer a lot of the technical questions y'all have. I just wanted to, since I kinda started with you, I just wanted to keep, keep going and just say thank you for hearing us and we're, we're trying to, uh, provide the best neighborhood we can.
If you will, please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, Dave DeYoung, one fourteen West Main Street, Clayton, North Carolina. And I'm happy to answer any questions. We can start with the, uh, parking question if you want.
Yeah, I just, uh, wanted to go back to that. The, the width of the road is smaller than a lot of roads in town. There was an initial concern about on-street parking. I think, uh, Mr. Twisdun mentioned that we were to, had agreed that it'd be parking on one side of the street. That, that slipped my mind. The, the width of the road around the park, is that still gonna be the same width road?
Correct.
But that is gonna be a designated overflow parking? That replaces the proposed, if needed, overflow parking lot?
So, along that loop around Central Park, the on-street parking that's being provided is being provided outside of the existing right-of-way width. So the lineage will remain the same. The parking is actually outside of that. So the two travel lanes will be completely unimpeded by that on-street parking. It's completely off-street.
Okay.
That's parallel. The other thing, um, Stephen doesn't know this yet, cause I didn't talk to him about it, but when we centralized the mail kiosk into Central Park for all the phases, um, the mail kiosks, the CBUs that are set up for Phase One and Phase Two were already formed and poured and in place for those residents until we get to the back. So once we move all the mail kiosks into the centralized location, we'll leave those parking spaces there. So there will be extra parking spaces in those, in those areas in Phase One and Phase Two that are outside of the right-of-way as well.
Roughly how much parking is that around the park?
Oh. You know, I don't have that number off the top of my head. It's a goodly number. It's probably somewhere between thirty and fifty spaces.
Thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions for the applicant at this time?
I just have one question. The, um, I was reading the information about the, um, the HOA would include, uh, maintenance fees for yards and shared open space and amenities. Is there also, I go back to, I'm parking on the road. Well, I go back to, uh, I'm assuming they also have something designated or set aside for road repair. Since they own that little road that's not covered by the town, they have to have funds in there to repay or whatever in the future.
Sure.
So I'm assuming that in your HOA, you're including something in there about maintenance, road maintenance fees as part of their HOA fee. So that there's set aside money to pay for that. Is that right? I mean...
Yeah, any, anything that is not designated as public, that's part of the amenities or part of the development, that's private, um, goes into the HOA as part of the maintenance fee.
But I mean, my question is though, is it, is it, are they dedicating funds set aside for that purpose? Or is it all just going into the pot and then whenever they need it, they draw out on it? There's a difference.
There is a budget that gets put together for, for future maintenance. It includes everything from the landscaping to, you know, the on-street parking spaces to the amenity center, to the mail kiosks, the whole nine yards. Everything that is, is private and part of the development is definitely line itemed at some point and put into a budget. And they, they budget that out for annual maintenance.
But you understand my concern? My concern is that down the road, down the road, they make sure that there's, there's not, uh, that there are...
Adequate funds.
That's correct. For them to maintain their own stuff. I mean, that's, cause they're, my view is they're still our citizens in town of Smithfield, right? And we wanna make sure they have the, they have what they need. And so that's what we're looking for.
When we established the HOA, we set it up with initial funding. And then they collect their dues. And if they have additional fees or things that they wanna add in the future for additional amenities or changes to playground equipment, they, they can certainly, uh, adjust their fees up and down according to budgetary needs. That's what the HOA has the authority to do.
Thank you.
So just, just a question on that. And Bob, this may be one for you, cause I know you do a lot of real estate transactions and so forth. So on the townhome side in this area that Councilman Barber is, is concerned with, obviously, we, we, we've had this issue come up before, right? Where residents want us to take streets over. So that, that is a concern. Now, I will say that probably one that you're most familiar with in a townhome community, that was designed to be public streets. From, from the start, the town did not accept those public streets because they were not up to standards. So it was designed as a street, not as a driveway, right? Going into these particular townhomes I'm making reference to. So the difference there is, is that that subdivision was designed as public streets, but we would not accept them until they brought them up to standards and met our inspection criteria. Once they did so, uh, a couple of years ago, um, we did accept them. But that was after that townhome community had been built for five to six, seven years or so. They finally decided to bring those up to standard. So there, I'm not sure if that's what you're, you're thinking about, but there've been other examples also. So, so, so a concern. My question is, is when these residents go to purchase these townhomes, will it be known to them upfront that that entire area is not a town-maintained road? And it will be their responsibility either if that is designated as a road, a private road agreement, or driveway? I don't know if that's a road or not. I, I mean, I, I see what you're saying, right? But my question is, is, I would feel most comfortable if those residents, at closing, sign something or know something that it is not a town's responsibility. So that they don't come back, um, six, seven years when it's time to pave that area and say, wait a minute, this is a road. We want the town to take it over. So maybe you can address that, and Bob, if you wanna chime in, fine, um, you know.
Sure.
I don't know that process, right?
Yeah, I, I can certainly address that. So first and foremost, there was a period of time, a recession that we went through in two thousand eight-ish that these subdivisions were built and developers put in roads. They never went through the process to get them taken over by the town at the time. And a lot of them actually just flew town and left half-built subdivisions. They ended up getting picked up by somebody else. The roads were never turned over to the town. So in the case, the cases that you're talking about, even in that townhome development, I'm going to assume that that's probably what happened there. In this case, and what we do now, and, and as a part of this process, is all the public roads get bonded. And they don't, we don't, the bonds do not get released until they're accepted by the town. And then there's a one-year warranty acceptance period where the town comes back and says, hey, you gotta fix these few things before we finally take this road over. So all that is in place that protects you. With private roads on plats, we label them as such. So everything on the south side, or sorry, on the west side.
East side.
East side.
East side.
It looks south to me. It looks east to me. Uh, everything on the east side. And I do agree, uh, those, those are going to be driveway entrances into the parking lot, just like you get in, go into a driveway entrance to get into a shopping center. So it is part of a parking lot. It's not public right-of-way. Um, they will be labeled private.
And that's something that should be probably a closing real estate agent or closing attorney or whatever. Cause I do see Councilman Barber's, you know, concern. Because if you're looking at that, I mean, hey, that looks like a, a street going into subdivision parking lot, right? So...
The only thing that will be even common to it as a street will, will have a name because of E-911. And having emergent services going to it. But other than that, it's a private street.
You got a sign that say private drop? A lot of times they have private drop signs.
Actually, actually, the street signs now, um, if, if Stephen wants us to do that, the DOT's starting to require it, Tona Clayton's starting to require it. Is, there's a, um, a little square that goes on the signs now that say either, it's white and it says state on the one corner, says public and it's in blue. And then the last one is private and it's in yellow. So certainly, that's probably been done just for this purpose. So people know right from the get-go. And we're happy to put those private with the yellow on that side. It's only gonna be two of them, so it's not that big of a deal.
Thank you. Any other questions at this time for, for the applicant? Thank you. We may have some additional questions.
Sure.
Anyone else in the audience wishing to speak for or against? This is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak for or against, please come forward. Yes, sir. If you will, please come forward, state your name and address for the record. Yes, sir.
My name is, um, John Twisdell Jr. Um, I reside at fifty-five thirty-six Pine Drive, Raleigh, North Carolina. We own property, my family owns property on both the north and south side of the development. And we would ask that the council, um, consider, um, additional buffering for the adjoining property, um, in addition to what is currently proposed. And that we would ask that the council make it conditional upon approval of this change, that, that additional buffing, buffer be installed by the developer.
And then additionally, I, I do have a couple of questions. If we could go back to the proposed, uh, storm, stormwater control ponds. So could someone elaborate on where those two proposed ponds would discharge?
David, can you address that, where the discharge points are?
Ultimately, I'm trying to get closer to the mic. Um, ultimately, those ponds will discharge into the Neuse River. But they have to meet stormwater control measures, the requirements, before they actually ultimately discharge. On either side, on the other side, um, it discharges into a stream on the other side.
On the, which side?
On the east side.
On the west side.
So the discharge, the discharge will flow towards the river, not towards his property?
On this side, you're on this side of the road?
Probably the west side, yes.
If you're on this side.
But my question, my question would be, will they discharge to the existing pond or goes into the river?
I'm not one percent sure if they hit the existing pond or if they're discharging. If they separately, I'd have to look at the construction drawings for that.
No, I don't recall either.
I don't, I don't recall. They, they could do that and they could go either way. It depends on how the engineer designed it to fall off. But I can't. Two ponds charge into the existing pond and there's one discharge point?
So our concern would be, they're working around this drainage course here. But this also managed to...
They wouldn't use a tributary into this.
So... So I would, I would ask that the council also make it conditional that it is confirmed that, that that water would drain away from the property, our property to the south, instead of towards our property. Since we are not sure at the moment, based on what I've heard. Does that make sense?
It, it does. I'm not sure that's what I heard, that I, I, I heard, and correct me if I'm wrong from the applicant. I, I heard that it would not drain towards your property. You weren't sure exactly...
I don't know exactly where, but it does not drain towards it.
You don't know exactly where it would drain, but it would not drain. That, that is confirmed. Is that a correct statement? That, that's what I heard, Mr. Twisd. I'm just, I wanna make sure that's what...
The water on the plan as of proved now that we would build without this approval is draining the same way. This, this, what we're doing here changes nothing to what is already currently approved from where that water's going.
So it originally went to the existing pond, correct?
It, it originally headed towards the Neuse River, wherever, wherever it's going. What we're doing tonight isn't really changing where that water's gonna eventually end up.
Right. Okay, so I'm good with that.
Okay.
As a for the council and everyone's reference, I pulled up the, the Phase One landscaping plan to show what is currently being installed for a buffer. And specifically, we're talking about, uh, the area here along this property line. And it's a edge row with some deciduous trees for the most part.
How wide is that buffer?
Forty feet?
The buffers that are on this plan are substantial. Clearly, Phase One is already constructed. The buffer plantings are in, but the buffer width is already, it's established because lots are already planted lots. On the other side of the development, where he's adjacent again, there's a, I think it's a sixty-foot easement for gas that we can't touch, we can't go in it. So I would, I would say that based on what you see here, actually, it's wider than that.
Can't read the numbers. It's about a hundred.
It's a hundred feet. There's a hundred feet CPNL or natural gas line, PMA natural gas line that runs at the tire length. On the outside of that, I think we still show something there, but we can't impede, obviously, we can't impede the natural gas line. They're not going to let us go anywhere near their easement, so that has to stay natural. Everything has to stay out of it. So there's really no way for us to increase buffers from what we've got now. Of course, try to mimic what we've had with the other two previous approvals. These buffer widths haven't changed.
So, did you say the plantings are in or are not in?
We're actually getting ready to do the plantings on that side of the road all the way, because Phase One just finished at least planting and the house is one up, so we're ready to landscape that. As the houses go up in Phase Two, we'll start that phase. So you'll see plantings go up along Buffalo Road, you'll see plantings go up in the buffer along between us and the houses in the property line. That's the approved Phase One planting plan.
Right. The question's not the width of the buffer, it's the proposed plantings and the size and height of those plants. So we're already having, you know, we've already had someone come through my grandparents' yard adjacent. They're already using that as a travelway. So, you know, we're just asking council to, you know, consider adjacent property and the visual impact, you know, that's occurring.
How wide is that buffer on the, I guess the... It's approximately forty feet.
Forty feet?
How dense is that plant? Because I mean, I can't really make up, is there only, is there only eight trees? I mean...
There's a hedge row, yeah, I'm counting, in Phase One, there, it looks like there's five over-story trees and two, three, four under-story trees, and then a hedge row at the immediate edge of the lots.
That meets the requirements, right?
I'm sorry?
That meets the landscape requirements, is that correct?
Well, there's no specific landscape requirements for single-family homes, but with a PUD, you know, PUDs are negotiated things, so I think there's some flexibility on both the council and developer to agree to what is appropriate. Where's the hedge row right now? I can't identify the plants, but they're probably four to six foot high, probably mostly evergreen, maybe some semi-evergreen, typically what you see on a hedge row.
So once they develop, they'll be fairly substantial in density.
I'm assuming.
Once they develop.
Sixty feet in maturity. It'll take a few years.
Yeah.
Right, I, you know, I fully agree with it'll be thick, but it's more the height and the visual impact that is our concern. I mean, ideally, you know, red cedars, leland cypress is something that could reach twenty to thirty feet in height would be ideal.
So I guess for the applicant, I mean, I don't know what's planted there, or, you know...
Based off of this, so can you guys elaborate on it?
We have a group plan with this buffer.
Right.
And as Stephen just pointed out, we're not even required to put it in. And we, in our PUD, agreed to put in a landscape buffer to cover these concerns. And if the gentleman would like to secure the property further, he has room on his side of the property line as well. We have, in good faith, put in this buffer and are committed to put it in, and we'll do that as the current approval, as we agreed on last time.
So additional comment, so please correct me, but since they are, this is open again, is this not open for change?
This is a new PUD master plan, so at this point, the town council is free to negotiate additional conditions or changes to the plan as are appropriate, to address any concerns or needs for public safety or welfare or what have you. I did pull up the list of the plant list here, this specific plan. Obviously, Phase One and Two are already approved. The remaining development is subject to change, so the council could address those future phases if it believes it's applicable.
More than half of this buffer is already planted, so I'm not sure.
That's true.
So the part close to your grandparents' house or parents' house?
That.
Okay. That part is already, I believe that's in Phase One, is it not?
So...
So the part next to that house, that buffer has already been set and approved, and we can't do anything about that, or... But that one part, close to the house, is already, Phase One is beyond the house already, correct?
Correct.
And the rest of it is in the pasture or field behind the house.
Wrong, but it may not remain.
What trees did you say you're planting over there that's already, you're going to be planting on that side? I'm just curious.
I got it right here. Japanese maples, red maples, willow oaks, sawtooth oak, there are bald cypress, there's seven of them, I don't know where they are in the plan, and linden for trees.
Most of those trees grow, I mean, they're going to grow pretty good height over time, is that not correct? I would, I mean, I got some maple trees, they grow, they're pretty tall, taller than my house. Twenty years to get there, now mind you, but, so I mean, it looks like to me, there is some trees that's going to go up there in that height. The immediate, your immediate need is going to, is really the hedge rows, which will be six foot tall, that's pretty good height for a hedge row. I don't want hedges that are six feet tall, so, I don't know, I mean, looks like to me, you're requesting trees that's going to be taller, well, those trees are going to be taller already, and there is a hedge row six feet tall that's going to be quicker built in place, because hedge rows will go faster than the trees. So eventually, you will have trees in that area covering the area, so what you're asking for, it looks like to me that you're going to get it, it's just going to take time to get it there. I mean, is it, am I mistaken? Because you just said you wanted some taller trees? Those are going to be very tall trees when they grow, it just takes time to grow them. I mean, I'm asking.
Right, but maple loses its leaves in the winter time.
Oh, yeah, that's true. I mean, you're talking evergreen trees?
So an evergreen tree would say green, get round, and then the plant it close enough together, essentially, it'll fall away. With this buffer, if there was no buffer, I could, as the applicant, accept the condition or respect the request. But there is a substantial buffer here that we've worked on with staff, that we negotiated for this very issue. If the app, if the adjacent property owner wishes to have additional things, he has acreage on his side of the line to do what he would like, but we have provided adequate buffering here.
Any other questions at this time?
Thank you, Ms. Twisdale. So, before we close on this, I would just ask that council consider if it were your own, your property, I have two hundred and eight homes, families home, that's a big adjustment. Our home is back there, behind those homes. So we're just looking down the road, and, you know, the development created a hardship facing property. We didn't ask for the development. I respect the neighbors' appropriately, if council, their, as well as the development. Appreciate your time, appreciate your service, thank you for assisting me.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on this matter?
I'm forward.
Are there any other questions, comments for Stephen at this time?
If not, I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make a motion for that.
My second.
A motion from Councilman Wood, second by Councilman Barber, to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Okay. All right, gentlemen, which is the pleasure of the board. We do have the eight conditions that were stated, as well as the applicant mentioned the addition of the private drive sign. I think we could make that a condition as well, just to make sure it's in the record. Just, I would advise, if that's something that you definitely want, we make that a condition, that way we know that that does happen, just the addition of the private road sign that you were asking about, Councilman Barber.
And then also, we, obviously, we have the concern of the citizens, so I'll introduce the board here as far as any further discussion on that.
The eight, the eight conditions are found on page sixteen of your agenda.
I'll say.
Yep.
Can I ask if the, I know we're closing the public hearing, but I have just a question to the, to the, um, do you guys agree with the finding, I mean, the eight conditions that are already here?
Yes, sir.
Because we didn't even ask, that wasn't even asked.
Yes, sir, and we would accept the ninth on the private street sign.
Somebody articulate what that ninth condition would say?
Yeah, we'll do that, once we get ready to make the motion.
Unless you want to go ahead and add the condition now, I mean, on any, on any motion either way to add that.
The ninth condition was that there would be, that the street would have a designation of a private street. The sign would, whatever, how they do it, it doesn't matter to me how they do it, if they stick a private sign up there, it's a private road, it doesn't matter to us, as long as everyone's aware of what it is, that's the point.
We think it'd be good if you, if the DOT has a standard on the sign that says private street, so we would accept whatever the DOT standard is on that sign.
That's what I was thinking. That way we know what to expect.
Yeah.
Is that a motion there?
I said we would make sure number nine, we're just trying to get number nine written down.
Is there a motion to add number nine?
I thought we have, we have a motion to do the whole thing. I know we had to have a motion.
No, I don't necessarily need a motion specifically on that. I just need a motion, and when you're, when you make your motion to include number nine, if that's what you wish, and any other conditions that you so choose, if you so choose.
Mr. Ray, I would just say that, um, you know, I can, I can empathize with people living in a neighborhood that changes drastically, not necessarily the way that they would like for it to change. But I do, this is my personal opinion, and my personal opinion is, I think the developer has done a good job at doing what they could do to provide buffering for that area, in my opinion. Maybe not the buffering that, that, you know, was desired, I understand what you're asking for, but I believe that they've done a good job at providing, that's my opinion. And so, given that said, I would recommend that we approve this with these eight, these nine recommendations, thank you, as documented.
My second.
And a motion and a second to approve.
Can I say this officially? I recommend we move to, we move to recommend approval of the revised PUD master plan, RZ twenty dash oh seven, with nine conditions of approval, with a statement declaring the request consistent with the Town of Smithville Conference of Growth Plan, and that the request is reasonable and in the public interest.
That's a motion. I have a second by Councilman Wood. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much, everyone who came and presented. Did want to, just to say that when we approved this previous, this is now the, what, the third, the third one that's come before the council. When we approved the last one, I will say that the developer recontacted me shortly thereafter, and he saw that the council had some reservations about the layout and so forth. Though again, as he stated, he was appreciative that we were able to think outside of the box, but he did contact me pretty soon thereafter and said, hey, Andy, I'm just not happy with this. We're going to work on something that I think you'll be pleased with. So to the developer, to Reed, your company, I want to personally say thank you, understanding that it may not, you know, he's Mr. Twisdale, exactly the way that you would want to, and I certainly understand that and echo Councilman Barber. But I do think, as far as coming and working with the town and so forth, I do, I do appreciate, appreciate that, because you could have just moved on with that plan, and you saw that we were kind of hesitant about that, and I think you want a good product, so I did want to say thank you on that. And just, just so, I, and I know this is not for tonight, but you did mention the reimbursement agreements, and it is going from nine phases to seven phases, and this is just for later conversation, right? But obviously, those reimbursement agreements were based off of those nine, right? And so we have to budget that way, so it does concern me a little bit, but I know that's something that we can work out later.
To be very clear, Mike has been awesome with this. We're in no hurry for the original schedule and everything, we're going to work that out with staff and work with the budget, all that's going to be fixed.
Okay, great. It wasn't really pertaining to this tonight, but it is a concern of mine, right? But, but thank you for that as well. Appreciate it. All right. Okay, gentlemen, we will now move on to our next public hearing. Again, this is not a quasi-judicial hearing, so no need for anyone to be sworn in at this time. Our next public hearing is RZ dash twenty dash zero six Partners Commercial Realty. The applicant is requesting to rezone two tracts of land totaling approximately one point nine eight acres from B two Business Zoning District and R eight Residential Zoning District to B three Business Highway Interest, Entrance Zoning District. The properties considered for rezoning are located on the west side of the intersection of North Brightleaf Boulevard and Waddell Drive. The properties are further identified as Johnston County Tax ID one five zero zero five zero four two and one five zero zero five zero four one. This time, I will entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
The move.
Second.
A motion and a second, all in favor? Stephen, I'll turn it over to you, sir.
Thank you. So just to reiterate, it's one point nine acres being rezoned, one...
One point four nine is, consists of the commercial property, um, that is the Brightleaf Plaza and the Enterprise rental car building. Um, that'll be from B two going to B three. And then the residential property behind it is forty Waddell Drive. That is a point five three acre property. It'll go from R eight to B three zoning. And you can see here, the foreground is Metro, where there says Metro PCS. That's one of the tenants in that building. Enterprise rental car is that freestanding building on the right, next to Waddell Drive. And you can see the residential lot behind, where the house has already been removed. The picture here shows the house, but the house is gone. And I just want to point out to the Sun Auto Wash and the residential lot next to Sun Auto Wash are both zone B three, which is the designation they're asking for. And everything behind these two properties that they're requesting rezoning for is all R eight. Everything else around them is B three. Really nothing else to add on this slide, talk about that. So, this is, this is a picture of the current Brightleaf Plaza. Enter, Enterprise has outgrown the space on the free, freestanding building, and, um, staff has been kind of on the property managers about them parking all over the landscape areas because they've outgrown the space. So, Mohammed and Sons have taken it upon themselves to address the issue, which is, uh, expand the site and, and, and find a new home for Enterprise right on that site. So, the existing rental, rental car building will be removed. The lots will be combined, and they will develop the site as a commercial strip with the Enterprise rental car as an end cap. And, uh, there would be parking, landscaping, lighting, signs, and other required improvements with that development. The rezoning will be a commercial encroachment into an existing residential neighborhood, similar to what exists across Waddell Drive. As I said, there's a single family home there that is already zone B three, more than likely with the ultimate intent to take it down and, and expand the car wash. Can't say for sure, but that's what it looks like. I want to point out that, that the comp plan, we have a new comp plan, and it, it's kind of based on five goals and then a number of, um, objectives. And the objective four A, or policy four A and three A on these two different goals, in both cases, they discourage encroachment of commercial uses into established residential neighborhoods. That was some feedback we had pretty clearly with the comp plan, and I would have to say, most specifically, had to do with downtown residential areas. But nonetheless, this comp plan doesn't differentiate between downtown and other areas. But it does say discourage, it doesn't say prohibit, so I just want to say that the comp plan wants the council and staff to look carefully whenever these kind of encroachments happen and consider the circumstances and what is best for the community. Under goal, sorry, objective three, policy three A, it talks about if it does occur, it should happen through, um, like a, a PUD type setting. But we don't have that tool in place for a single use PUD, and that is conditional zoning. That's what we're working on right now. The comp plan envisioned having that tool, so when an encroachment does occur, the council has a little more control over it and can dictate, you know, what buffers and other needs are, are, should be in place to protect those residential neighborhoods. In this case, you know, there's no, no guarantee, because once it's a rezoning, those uses in the B three district are allowed, and they can do whatever they want by rights. But they have indicated that they want to build another Brightleaf Plaza with an end cap with Enterprise. So, just wanted to point that out. So, in summary, the comprehensive plan discourages commercial encroachments into residential districts, and it stipulates that if they do, they should meet a specific criteria to minimize its impact on the residential area. It should be done as part of the plan developments. We have no tool for that, we're working on it, um, and as I said, but we kind of know what they're going to do, and, and we're pretty confident that they're going to do it. But again, it's no guarantee. I just want to point out the proposed B three zoning. I just listed some of the, uh, uses that would be allowed into B three. It's our most expansive zoning district for commercial uses. The, uh, Brightleaf Plaza is currently zone B two. When I held up the two districts side by side and made a comparison, I literally could find very few differences specifically for commercial uses. There are some other differences, um, probably not, not as impactful, um, uses, like some resident, residential uses. There, there's some differences there, but in terms of, you know, your, your primary commercial uses, they're really the same, and the district standards are really the same as well. You know, size and density, that type of thing. And again, what they're proposing is in conformity with the B three standards, because we cannot rezone nonconforming properties to a, a new district. And I already talked about staff's opinion of the consistency statement. With the rezoning, a lot will be in conformance with the B, sorry, it should be the B three standards. There won't be two here. And it will be compatible with the surrounding la, land uses. With the, in, in large space, it will actually have a greater opportunity to have more buffering, landscaping, and fencing, which they've indicated they would be providing. With that, staff and the planning board recommend approval of RZ twenty oh six with a statement declaring it consistent with the Towne Smithfield comprehensive growth management plan, and that it's reasonable in the public's interest. With that, I'll take any questions you may have.
I have a question. Are they going to tear down the Enterprise building as it stands, right?
Yes. And I want to point out too, that's, that's a pretty nonconforming structure. Car's back into the street currently, so a new development will create a much more controlled entrance and exit from that property.
I don't, I don't dispute that. That building's been there since seventeen seventy-six. There's a lot of history there. Lot of history there. That was the old In-N-Out building. I'm sure Bob Spence can go further back than that on by Jack Gardner, if I believe it was Ava's brother. But there's more history to it than that, but.
Stephen, on your slide eleven, uh, the items you have listed, those are just some of the items that are allowed in a B three?
Correct.
Not necessarily ones that are allowed in a B three and not a B two?
Right. These are just kind of the, the uses you're likely to see on that site. It's not the complete list, because I couldn't fit it on multiple slides, but, um, the primary uses you'd see in the commercial district, particularly along that highway strip, these are all uses that are allowed actually in both B two and B three.
So, what would an example be of something that wouldn't, would not be allowed in a B two that would be in a B three?
I think single family homes are allowed in a B two, but they're not allowed in a B three. There's some uses like that that are different, but there weren't a lot of primary commercial uses that had any difference. Just some little differences on the edges of the uses, not very many. Thank you.
Now, are there any other structures? The structure behind the, the current Enterprise, that, that's already gone, right? I already see cars parked there all the time, right? Are there any other structures that, I'm trying to visualize that, um, but, you know, I knew, I know there was a house right behind that, but will any other houses have to go, be taken down?
So, this is the property right here, that I'm, in my cursor. That house was taken down on that lot. The remainder of these lots are single family homes, and they're all going to remain.
There, there's a single family home already that backs up to the existing strip mall. Is that correct? Right, yeah.
Here?
Right there. And that's a single family house, right? Okay.
And, uh, this, this is a public hearing, I guess, does anybody here from that community?
Yeah. Any, any other questions over Stephen at this time? Not, is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak for or against this?
The applicant is here. Do you have any questions for him?
Any questions for the applicant?
I, I'd like to make a comment, though. I may say this, before COVID, I was probably one of the best customers Enterprise had over there. Let me tell you, they outgrown that building years ago, okay? And I am just saying, I am, I think it's a great statement of the development of Smithfield to have that Enterprise in that location, because it does say a lot. So, I haven't driven to Clayton, or driven to Raleigh, or Garner, or whatever. We have, and, and the, and, I was, I mean, I know the people, because I go there, I went there a lot. And, and the point is, they are just, it is such a demand, there more demand there than is in Goldsboro. So, that says a lot about Smithfield and the people that's living in Smithfield, the convenience of Smithfield. So, I'm glad to see that there's some expansion to be done, because they've brought it growing, for sure. So, I mean, I think it's a great, it's a great statement of Smithfield that is able to have such a, a, a enterprise, enterprise there. And, and since no one is, it doesn't appear to be that they're, you know, they, they're, they don't run their business at nighttime. You know, the, the, they close Saturday at lunchtime, so there's nothing there on Saturday or Sunday, and there's nobody there, and they're usually done by five thirty, and they'll open to eight thirty in the morning. So, my point is, it's not really interfering a lot with the, the community there in that situation either. So, just my thoughts. I, I appreciate the, uh, I'm excited for the possibilities.
Any other questions? Comments?
Stephen, Mike, I did have one question. As far as the existing, um, strip mall that is there with the residential right behind it, are you, are you aware of any, any complaints or anything, uh, you know, any major complaints that we have from the existing, of the strip mall that's there?
I've never heard of complaints.
Concerns or anything from the neighbors? Since they're, they're not here, I think that's a good sign that we don't have anything. But just because this will be encroaching even further into that residential neighborhood, I was just, just wondering if we had anything, any, to your knowledge?
None.
Thank you.
I, I didn't, are you planning on building any buffers around the, the lot?
So, if you will, please, um.
I'm sorry.
If you'll come to the podium, state your name and address for the record. The public hearing is still open, and.
Yeah. My, my question is, because again, because it is encroaching into a, a residential neighborhood, is there any planned buffers for that space to separate them from the residential areas? I don't know if you already have anything there or not, or any, anyway.
Okay, so, first of all, Jim Paracone, Partners Commercial Realty, three eighty-eight Venture Drive, Suite A, Smithfield. So, uh, the plan is, uh, in terms of the building, it's going to be a setback and separate building from the existing one, uh, to provide parking both up front and behind. The behind parking will really focus on Enterprise and access for the other tenants than to go in the additional spaces. But we're going to provide, uh, parking back there in their wash area so that that's, uh, screened from the street, uh, as much as possible by putting it behind the building. Along the property lines, the intent is to put a buffer consisting, at least the preliminary discussion is fencing, uh, coupled with, uh, plantings. So, uh, they, the combination provides visual screening and sound screening, uh, by the, by doing both, so. I just want to point out that, uh, the buffer required in this commercial next to residential is a twenty foot, uh, C buffer, which includes fencing and landscaping. So, it's a little broader buffer zone. We, the intent is to be good neighbors, and again, for the same reason, we haven't had complaints from the neighbors with the existing center. We, we don't want to change that. As the property manager, I will tell you, that doesn't make my life better, it makes it worse, so. Any other questions?
Any other questions for the applicant? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
No further. If there are any further, any further questions? All right, I'll entertain a motion to, to close the public hearing.
No move, Mr. Mayor.
Second. A motion by Councilman Wood, second by Councilman Rabel. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
We got a vote on it. Don't leave yet.
Mr. Mayor, I'm moved to recommend approval of zoning map amendment RZ two zero dash zero six, finding it consistent with the Towne Smithfield comprehensive growth management plan and other adopted plans, and that the amendment is reasonable and in the public interest.
Second. I have a motion and a second to approve, and found consistent with the comprehensive growth plan. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, sir. All right. Thank you, Stephen. Now, we'll move on to citizens' comments. Anyone wishing to speak in citizens' comments, please come forward. Make your name and address for the record, please, with Limpie.
Uh, Guy Lempie, four fifteen North Second Street. You're voting on the water plant, um, expansion tonight, and I'm not for it, but what I'd like to, my concern is, the second concern is the nature trail. And we had a map last year of the location of the nature trail where it was going, and my question is, is it still in the same spot where they had drawn the proposal last year?
Mike, can you address that concern?
So, Mr. Lempie, you have here what is, what was the proposed reservoir, which forced this to go out. Now, we've cut this corner off right here, which will allow this to remain where it currently is.
Correct, so it's pretty much the same spot.
It is.
Correct. But it'll be on dirt, or it'll be wood raised, or gotten, not gotten.
We're not planning on moving it at all.
Oh, you'll leave it where it's at.
Mm-hmm.
Perfect. And that was my concern, and thank you for hearing me.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Now, move on to our business items. We added one to our first business item, which was the minutes.
Yet, yet approved the consent agenda.
Oh, did I skip?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I was looking right at it, too, right? I made the, I made the change to the consent agenda.
Thank you, gentlemen. I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as, as it was amended.
No move.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right. Now, we'll move on to business items. Keep it straight up here. All right, the first one was a removal from the consent agenda, which was, uh, some corrections to the, the minutes from our last meeting.
Yes, I believe, uh, in the minutes, it says, "All the parties renegotiated this access and agreed to provide a ten-foot easement," be hard to go from without glasses, uh, "across the shared property line adjacent to the cemetery. This new access is a compromise for all parties." Uh, that was what was agreed to at the last meeting. I think for some clarification, um, that is revised as the easement will be ten feet in width from the street to the cemetery and landscaped so as to provide vehicle and pedestrian access to the cemetery. The adjoining owners of the lots adjacent to the easement will remain, will maintain it so as to preserve accessibility.
I think that was just a request for some clarification on those, those minute meetings, down to the minute, so that it's clear as to, to that specific.
So, that's what we already agreed to.
That was some additional clarification.
Right, right.
Just clarifying.
It's clarifying what we already agreed to. It's not changing what we agreed to, it's clarification.
Yeah.
More detailed clarification, okay.
That is correct. So, do I have a, a motion, um, to amend the, the last month's? Well, I guess we just don't need to amend them, we just need to vote on them. Like, got it, got them out, so. So, just to, to add that, um, add that statement to the minutes.
So, so just to add that, add that statement to the minutes. Do I have a motion to add that statement that Councilman Dunn just read the last month's?
I'll make a motion that we add the statement that Councilman Dunn just previously read to the minutes from last month's and approve them.
I have a motion to add the statement and to approve the minutes with that addition. I think I have a second by Councilman Stevens. All in favor? And Madam Clerk, we'll give you a copy of this, so that you have it and you can put into the minutes. Thank you, Mayor Protem. Now we'll move on to the next business item, which is the social media policy. Consideration and request for approval of a social media policy for appointed board members and elected officials. Mike, turn it over to you, sir. That's page 93 of your agenda.
93, 94, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a policy that was brought before the council during the last council meeting. It impacts all of our appointees, our board members, as well as the council itself. During the last council meeting, during the discussion phase, it was staff's belief that the council agreed with the policy as it was written. However, they asked that we go back and provide this to all of our board appointees, seek feedback from them, and then come back tonight for a subsequent request for approval. We have done that, we've set the draft policy to all of our boards and all of our board members. We received no real negative feedback from anyone. We did receive some recommendations that maybe if we could summarize the policy a little bit, also maybe, you know, so that more of a snapshot of what it really is, so someone doesn't have to go through and read the entire policy, pull out the high points. That was one recommendation that we received. Other than that, we received nothing but positive feedback. Everyone thought it was a good idea, agreed with the concept, agreed with the language. And we're here in front of you tonight asking again to approve or seek further direction from the council on how you'd like us to...
Thoughts of the board on social media policy?
I'm moved to approve it as it is and move on.
I have a motion and a second, just a little discussion I will add based off of the last comment. I think the summary, summary is a great idea, right? But my recommendation is, is that you read the entire policy, right? So, read the summary, but still going to have to read the policy, right? Because there may be something in that policy that is not in the summary. And we're putting this policy in place for a reason. So I would advise to read the policy, right? So, motion and a second, any further discussion? Do you have done? All in favor, say aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Mike.
The next business item is business item number three, consideration and request for approval to adopt the 2021 Town Council Meeting Schedule.
Thank you. On page 102 of your staff agenda, you have staff report which lists the recommended meeting schedule for the next calendar year, starting January 5th. All of these meetings are scheduled for the first Tuesday of every month at 7:00 PM, just as they currently are. However, the November 2nd date, we are recommending you move to November 9th, which would be the next, the second Tuesday in the month, because that is municipal election day. We anticipate that normally the council does not want to hold a meeting on an election day. So, other than that, we are recommending they all remain the same. However, feel free to answer any questions the council may have if they see something they'd like to alter.
Any questions from Mike on the meeting schedule? All right, do I have a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve and to include the suggestion of moving to November 8th, November 2nd, November 9th.
I have a motion and a second to approve, all in favor? All opposed? Thank you, Mike.
Now we'll move on to business item number four, consideration and request for approval to adopt resolution number 670, setting the date for a public hearing on the closing of a portion of Ninth Street. That's page 105.
Stephen, I'll turn it over to you, sir.
Yeah, this is a section of Ninth Street that goes from Hancock towards the entrance to the Walgreens site. If you recall, years ago, they vacated the portion of Ninth Street in front of Walgreens to make room for this entrance you see on the map here. The developer of this 1.2 acre site would like to vacate this right of way, showing where my cursor is, to combine, and combine the lots, I'm sorry, and combine the lots to make a larger development site. One caveat, there is public utilities in that right of way, so they will have to dedicate a 30-foot wide easement over those utilities, and the developer is aware of that. The purpose of tonight's meeting is to set the public hearing to discuss, to discuss the right of way closing. That's the first step in the process, if the town council is agreeable.
So, are you, are we looking for a specific date, or is that something that we...
Yeah, you have to set, resolutions to set a date.
So we can set it at our next meeting, though, correct? The pleasure of the council? But this is just to set the public hearing, right? Could you want, should you want to move forward with it?
Yes, sir.
Make a motion, Mr. Protem.
To next meeting, to hold a public hearing at the next meeting?
At the next meeting.
I'm sorry. Yes, sir.
Just want to make sure that we're approving the actual resolution.
Yeah, yeah, but I guess my question is, does that resolution have that date in there? Yeah, so we'll, okay. Yeah, so approve, approve resolution number 670, adopt that resolution. To the intent to close, it's on page 107.
It was on the back.
It's on 107 of my package, sorry. Basically, we just need a, we just need a motion to adopt resolution number 670 and set the public hearing to our next...
Mr. Mayor, 107 says it's resolution number 19-2020.
Well, it's...
Resolution 670.
This is inherently confusion.
Yes, it is. A long way from there. With the intent of adopting the resolution. Correct.
And that, by that time, we will have notified all the property owners, they can come and complain or do as they will, because they're not going to, they might complain, somebody could be denied access by a street being... You're basically setting up a hearing and telling us to serve. Have the hearing next January, and everybody be notified.
All right, is that clear, gentlemen? So what we need is, we need to have a motion with, for the, to set a public hearing at our next meeting for the intent of adopting resolution number, what I have, 670, and then in parentheses, 19-2020. That's the correct number. All right.
I'm making it that we adopt the resolution number 670, 19-2020, resolution of intent to permanently close the North Ninth Street public right of way, and to schedule and advertise for a public hearing for the permanent right of way closure.
I second it.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. All opposed?
Thank you, sir. Yeah, that one was a little, the way it's in our package is a little, little confusing, so sorry about that, gentlemen. All right.
Will that give you enough time to...
Okay, now we'll move on to our next item, which is consideration and request for approval of the low bid for construction of the water plant project outlined in resolution number 671. Ted, I'll turn it over to you, sir. Quit stating the page numbers.
Gentlemen, good evening. Tonight, staff will come before you to request approval for the proposed water plant improvement project. Tonight, I will provide a summary on things, namely, where we are, what this project will actually look like, what the actual cost of the project will be, address some project technical concerns, and make a request of the council. So to begin where we are now. In July of this year, we finally obtained the last approval from the state of North Carolina. This marked approval from all state and federal agencies. In October, we went before the local government commission, and they approved the request to finance the project. Shortly thereafter, we publicly bid the project. Bids were received on November 17th, just a couple of weeks ago. During the development of this project, there's been a lot of, a great deal of conversation regarding what would actually be built. Terms that were used were sometimes causing confusion. So I'm here to show you through some renderings what will actually be built. Majority of the plant upgrades will occur inside existing buildings and will not be visible to the outside world. A new sediment basin is an open pool of water that we use to have the heavy dirt particles settle out and fall to the bottom by gravity. The confusing term clear well is really just a tank of water, like the existing tank already on site. The reservoir will be expanded in one direction to increase storage and treatment capacity. And a new sludge basin will be dug into the ground where backwash water will end up and be sent through our sludge system to remove dirt particles before returning as processed water to Buffalo Creek. And of course, the new filter, which is inside of the building, and that's what enables us to increase the amount of water we can treat. So as promised, this is a rendering of what the existing plant looks like, if you were floating above the operations center and looking westward. This is what it will look like, hopefully, when the project is completed. And I know some of these differences do not jump out of the page, so I'll walk you through them. The new clear well is a tank that will hold 1 million gallons of water. This new 1 million gallons of storage is required by state regulation. Thankfully, Town Council has already approved this construction, because the last two projects submitted to the NCDQ, which included the Johnston County Community College Engineering Building and the extension of Phase 2 in East River, both had review comments from the state asking why the town's storage was deficient. Approval for both of these projects were obtained once it was explained that the new structure would be built in 2021. This is the new building. The filter resides inside of the building, and the sediment basin sits directly behind the building. The powdered activated carbon silo will sit next to the existing chemical tank. Once treatment increases, the production of sludge also increases in a one-to-one ratio. The sludge basin we built into the ground, and is, will accommodate the increase in sludge production. Now what isn't pictured, but is part of the project, is the new Tier 4 electric generator, which will be located in front of the new building. The new generator will be an upgrade from the present Tier 2 generator to a Tier 4 generator, which is an EPA requirement for load management. And of course, the reservoir will be expanded to accommodate the increased intake from the river. Better see the reservoir expansion, this is a view floating about 100 feet above the Greenway south of the reservoir looking northward. Once enlarged, the new reservoir will have a capacity over 20 million gallons and will be divided, so each cell can be isolated for maintenance, without having to take the complete reservoir offline. It should be noted that reservoir expansion and the construction around the plant will necessitate the closure of portions of the Greenway in the project area. There are no plans to relocate the Greenway. We will address the reconstruction of the Greenway, of the closed sections in the coming budget year. So imagine you're standing on the corner of North Street and Second Street, facing northward, looking down the street at the water plant. This is what you would see today. As I send this into motion, see how the improvements are added. Please note that nearly all the improvements are made away from the neighborhood on the north side of the existing building. Only the powdered activated carbon silo is constructed on the south side of the building. Finally, we will end up in the same location where we started from, looking in the same direction. What is visible is the landscaping and the fence gate. From this to this. Well, pre-pictures and computer renderings are great, but how much is this thing really going to cost? As mentioned, the bids were received on November 17th. The low bidder was identified as Shook Construction from Apex, North Carolina. Their base bid was 11,650,000. There were four alternates included as part of the bid. Once added, the low bid is 14,690,000 dollars. So we know how much the construction will cost, how do we pay for this project? Funding for this project has to come from four sources. The allocation fee Johnston County paid a year ago. A state revolving fund loan that was offered through the NCDQ Department of Water Infrastructure. The repurposing of already budgeted funds in this year's approved budget. And a one-time withdrawal from the water fund. The price tag of the whole thing is 17,000,598,500 dollars. So this project has not been without technical concerns. From a technical viewpoint, we've had to look at how traffic patterns may be affected in the area, what environmental impacts may occur as a result of this construction. Are there any impacts to historical grounds? How do we afford the servicing of the loan? Early on, we employed Rami Kemp Associates to perform a traffic study. Their analysis showed the traffic would flow at similar levels of service once completed. Essentially, no impact. As part of project approval for environmental concerns, we have been permitted by the state to draw more water from the Neuse River. We've obtained state approval for the treatment process upgrades, which will improve the water quality. We've received permission from the state to perform earthwork to expand the reservoir, and we procure consent from the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers to minimally disturb the wetlands so the reservoir can be enlarged. As part of this approval, we've had to show we are not harming any endangered plant or animal species. Staff also hired a consultant to search for evidence of ancient peoples, both Neolithic and Native American, to ensure we were not destroying any significant archaeological remains. The consultant found no evidence to indicate the presence of significant archaeological resources. resources. Though of great concern is the debt that will arise from the construction of this project. To investigate the impact, we hired two separate consultants, the Wooton Company and Utility Financial Solutions, to perform separate rate studies. Both analyses showed that rates would not have to be adjusted to afford the debt service arising from the state revolving fund loan. In fact, one of the key assumptions in both of these analyses placed town growth at half a percent. And even at that level, we could afford this project. In fact, analysis showed that bulk sales would, in effect, pay for the debt service on the loan. Lastly, please note that both analyses were performed under the presumption of a twenty year loan that would be offered at an interest rate of one point eight-two percent, which was on the original offer letter, which is, and it's also a pretty good rate. In fact, the actual offer loan that has come through, and has been made, shows the interest rate to be one point one-one percent. This lower rate has the net effect of reducing the yearly payment by about fifty thousand dollars, for a total savings over the life of a twenty-year loan of almost one million. So what is staff actually requesting? Staff is asking the council to approve the project, to approve Shook Construction as the low bidder, and to approve the proposed resolution, which will tentatively award Shook Construction the contract based upon available funding. Members of council, this project represents one step of many, that is a response to the growth that is already occurring in the town, in our utility service area. Growth is here, and demand is on the rise. We have a fantastic opportunity to upgrade the plant and prepare ourselves for the growth that is occurring and will continue to occur in the future. But most importantly, as I said when this process started three years ago, this can all be achieved without raising rates. Thank you for your time. Uh, with me tonight is our engineering consultant, uh, Mr. Charlie Davis from the Wooton Company. Should you have any questions, technical or otherwise?
Thank you, Ted. Any questions for Ted?
Ted, I have just a, at least I knocked my glasses off this time. I, I have just a couple of questions about the seventeen point six million dollars. I looked through the package we had, and I can't, I mean, I'm sure there's other incidentals that may not be spelled out in this exact proposal, but of that seventeen point, uh, six million dollars, does that include the clear well that we've already budgeted for?
Yes.
And does that also include any engineering that we may have already paid for?
Yes.
And to date, on, well, we hadn't actually paid anything for the clear well, I don't imagine, at this point.
No.
Uh, but engineering, how much of that have we paid? More or less?
More or less. Around eight hundred thousand.
So we've already paid that?
Right.
Um, and the million, more or less, for the clear well, right now, that is sitting in the water and sewer fund balance, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
And also the three point two-five from the county, as of the audit report we just saw, that was sitting in the fund balance as of six thirty also?
Yes, it is.
Okay. So from our water and sewer fund balance, we're getting to pull out four point two-five million dollars. Is that?
That's what the numbers are, I don't, I mean, yes.
Minus the eight hundred thousand, not in the fund balance, what did they pay?
Yeah, the eight hundred thousand's already been paid. So you wouldn't have to pull that out.
Okay, yeah, that was already taken out, three point two-five.
Did you have a slide showing fund balance, uh, what was being removed from fund balance? I thought you had a slide on there.
Yeah, I did, hold on.
It wasn't four million dollars.
The next presentation, we'll also have to go through it a little better, but that's okay, let's do it now, let's, you have a question.
I have a, I have a question for you, go ahead. I know at one time, we, the water plant, that's two million dollars.
According to that.
You're around fifteen million, and now we're at seventeen point five million, what's the other?
The construction costs were under fifteen million. That was a construction cost estimate. There are other soft costs that are involved, like the engineering design, the traffic analysis and whatnot.
So this is, all the incidentals come up to seventeen and a half.
Yeah, that's everything.
So can you repeat that, because that's the question I have, because when I, it was around fourteen million is what I added up from the bid, right?
Right.
So can you just go through what those additional costs are that would add up to the seventeen, you know, five ninety-eight? So we're clear on that?
We don't have anything to tell us what exactly is what.
I have fourteen, six, nine.
Right.
I won, I wonder if I should crack into the next, um, presentation, just to get to a couple of slides.
It'd be nice if we had this beforehand.
That'd be, that'd be fine. And is there a particular reason we don't have these slides?
Yes.
No, not at all, I mean, I'm.
Actually, that's why I was saying, like I would be the second, I would, like we didn't get included.
You guys want the slides now, or?
I was looking up on the screen, maybe you must have had beforehand.
Is this from this set of slides, or the next set of slides?
This is the next set of slides, but this is the, the showing of the same, the funding is the same numbers, the column under funding, where, you know, it lists Johnston County State Loan, et cetera, that's the same number. And then you asked about the cost, and those are the, that's where the costs are coming from.
But we got the fifteen million dollar estimate last year when you proposed the, what is it?
The construction.
Now it's mostly just construction, there was nothing else.
Construction costs.
So as far as just the, the low bidder themselves, Shook, I'm not familiar with that company. Have we checked references? Have they done other water plants or water plant expansions?
Shook Construction is a, a national slash regional, uh, construction firm based in Ohio, I believe, either Columbus or Cleveland, I'm not sure which. They do have a Raleigh's, uh, office, or technically Apex. Um, they have done work, uh, water plant work specifically in Roxborough, Craven County, Monroe, uh, and a couple others in North Carolina. I've not dealt with them personally before. Um, I've know, I've heard of them and know they're around, and I, I think that's essentially what Charlie has said, the same thing, that he, he knows of them, and they, they seem to be reputable, although he's never dealt specifically, can address that, Charlie?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you for having me tonight. Shook Construction has bid on several of our projects. Uh, they have not been the respective low bidder, uh, like they are on the Smithville project. But as Ted mentioned, they are out of the Ohio area, have probably been in the North Carolina market for about ten years. While we did not, uh, check references for this particular project, uh, we have pre-qualified them on two, um, projects in the past that were similar in nature. One was a water plant, one was a wastewater plant expansion, both in North Carolina. Uh, both of those, one was fourteen, fifteen million, the other one was twenty-two million in cost. They were referenced, and we checked, we had the full nine yards about their financial history, their references, everything, safety records. So they have been vetted, uh, in the past. Uh, we are familiar with them, although we have not worked with them directly.
So, so my question there would be just, and it may be one, it may be difficult to answer though, but I'm assuming some of these others, especially like T A Lovin, is probably a company that you probably work with, and know they're doing work here in the county now.
Correct.
I see we have a five percent contingency, they are the low bid, right? How, how sure are we that it's going to remain at this price, or, I mean, will it remain at this price unless we submit change orders? I guess is my question. I mean, is that you?
Yes.
Okay.
I mean, that, that's the contractual price, so that's what it'll be unless there's a change order, and that has to be approved, you know, not by me, I mean, it has to be approved by you guys.
Yeah, I just understand, I mean, I, I, I understand that in theory, right? But also, dealing with a lot of construction properties, I know that's not always how it happens, and we get in these disputes up, oh, no, 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 you didn't bid it that way, and it, it, you know, it's going to be another million dollars, because, no, that's not exactly the way you bid it. The reason I ask is if you had familiarity with the company, like a T A Lovin or someone, I'm not, I'm just, I just throw them out, because I recognize that name, you would, you would kind of know what to expect if we were getting into that type of situation. That is my question and my concern.
That, you, you, you bring up a valid point, and that is a concern. Based on our experience, although we have not worked with them, uh, I believe vendors and others who have worked with them have spoke highly of them. Um, again, they have been in the market, you know, at least ten years in North Carolina. Uh, we would have heard, I would have thought, of, of concerns with them. Uh, again, uh, part of the vetting that we did on similar projects in the past, uh, they were asked to provide, you know, change percentage, uh, of construction cost based on the bid, um, as long, as well as like others, like T A Lovin State Utilities, um, they were in line with what you would expect. Um, you know, that's all subject to how well the project documents have been put together, and, and, but any change that would be presented has to be fully vetted through the engineer, and then would be with the town. Um, but I, you know, entering into it as we are right now, I, I can't say that I have any concerns, but I also can't state, I mean, we haven't worked with them before, but we believe that they are, you know, they're, they're licensed properly to do the work, and we have all expectations they can perform as, as intended, to the best of our knowledge. Yes, sir.
Thank you. Any other questions for Ted?
According to your slide, while ago, you said most of the improvements that we'll see are just going to be on the inside, except for the sludge tank, and what else, Melvin?
Oh.
Can you go back to that slide and just show us?
Sure, absolutely.
Show us what we'll see, I mean, a lot of people, a lot of people think we're going to see a bunch of other stuff, and we're just trying to find out what, what we're going to see, that's the difference. Yeah, got to what we've seen now, what we see now.
That's what you see now. So you can see the white tank, that's at the bottom of the hill, and you see the two holes in the ground that you don't actually see, because there are holes in the ground, that's what the little blue circles would be. Uh, that's, the sludge building is the one farthest to the south on the, by the greenway, and that's the actual water plant building. Now, as it, there's the improvements. Um, we've added a tank, which is similar to the other white tank, but we've added another hole in the ground. We've expanded the building.
You can see it.
Yeah, I can highlight them, I can highlight them, there's the tank, there's the expanded building.
That'll be right there in the curve.
Yes, sir.
Behind your electrical.
There's currently a grassy field between the holes in the ground and the building, and we're, that's where we're going to expand the building into. All right, um, that's a tank, it's a, a silo, like a farm silo, it's forty, forty feet in the air. Four stories. It's a round circular thing, uh, twenty feet around, like a plastic tank. And there's the hole in the ground, and then there'll be a generator building, or it's small, it'll be a generator pad. Uh, and it's smaller than half of this, a quarter of this room, for the new generator, it'll be small, it's a room, it's a sixteen, you know, like twelve by sixteen, it's a small.
That'll be on the north side.
That'll be right in front of the new expanded building on the north side, and that's where the new generator will go.
Does that replace the generator we were having problems with?
Yes.
Okay, so that's rolled into this project too?
Yes.
Okay.
And then there'll be an expansion on the greenway, uh, back by the reservoir, that I think, um, this, this rendering was made in the old design, uh, it'll be cut away, so it's not to, it's not exactly a rectangle, it's closed, but the end's been chopped off. And that, you only see that when you're on the greenway. And we're adding, uh, landscaping and fencing.
Where?
Well, you can see it there, uh, between the ball, the field and the water plant.
Metasol, showing it.
Yeah, there. That's what you end up seeing, if you're standing on the corner of North and Second, looking at the water plant, that's what you see now, because it's open, and you'll see fencing, it doesn't show up good on the picture, but you can see fencing, and then you'll end up seeing landscaping.
And Ted, you may have said this, but does this price include that landscaping?
Yes, it does.
The, uh, in our audit report, the water and sewer has a twenty-one million dollar fund balance, more or less, right now. Now, or as of?
At the end of last.
At the end of six thirty, anyway, six thirty of twenty twenty. So, uh, the three point two-five was in that, but we've already spent eight, so we're not going to take but two point four out, more or less, and then an additional one point nine.
Are you looking at the question of the audit?
I'm looking at page four of the summary he provided.
Greg, could I ask you to, you're going, can you come, Greg, could you come to the podium over here, just so you, you're, you're near a mic, please?
So, um, the audit, that section of the fund balance includes assets. What you want to concentrate on is the cash part.
Okay. All right, so roughly, there's twelve million dollars in fund balance, the cash fund balance, and we're going to take four point three out. So how big of a decrease is that, and where would that put us with our, uh, percentage ratio?
Based on expenditures that we had at the previous audit, it would put us just under eighty percent.
It would still be at eighty percent.
Seventy-nine point nine.
And there's a lot of incidentals in here that, that work things together. How much of this would have to be done, if you could estimate, and it may, you may have a detailed schedule, I don't know, um, would have to, would need to be done within the next few years in repairs and normal maintenance, not keep, for example, the generator would have to be done anyway.
So if I understand your question correctly, you're saying if we piecemealed this project together rather than did it all in one bunch, how long would that take?
No, there was a, a comment made, I believe I was absent at that meeting, about the deferred maintenance on things that needed to be done in the building, replacement of certain existing parts. All that is included in this.
Yes.
So how much of this seventeen million is really, for lack of a better word, repairs and maintenance?
Okay.
I guess is what I'm trying to say.
Right, so if, uh, the last time I looked at those numbers, we're in the ballpark of seven to eight million.
So seven to?
Repair, for example, the replacement of the pumps, the, the drive, main drive pumps, that would have to be done. Um, I think, yeah, I think we, we took a list, I believe, and we went through, what if we just did this versus the whole project?
Right.
I think that was the, yeah, that was the number.
That was in part of that presentation, seven months ago.
Little over seven.
Between seven and eight million.
Yeah, you did the presentation, you said, well, that's one of the causes, if we didn't do expansion, we start spending.
That's a different slide.
But there was a list, remember, because you presented a list, uh, Mike presented a list of what was, what would it cost, even if we don't do expansion, what we got to spend in the next number of years, just for maintenance? That's includes, to, 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 uh, John's point, though, that is included in the costs that we're doing, because we were going to have, but, you understand what I'm saying?
Yes.
So even though it's seventeen million dollars, we were going to spend eight million dollars no matter what.
Yes.
So really, in addition, the addition is really nine million dollars, not seventeen million, because we were going to spend eight million dollars no matter what. Is that correct? I mean, is that basically, that's what you're asking, John, basically?
Yeah, that's what I was trying to find out.
Yes, and that's what, uh, and that's what, uh, Mike had, and, and if you didn't get that information, I'm sure Mike can give it to you, because that was, that was really a good presentation, defining all those things, what was on costs.
Another front of questions, I guess, I'm going to make a motion, we approve the construction. Another front of questions, I guess. I'm going to make a motion to approve the construction bid. Resolution, I guess, six seventy-one.
I'm going to second that.
Have a motion and a second to, um, approve the, uh, the low bid. When it was outlined in resolution number six seventy-one. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Ted, just a, a question. For you, the, the meters for the water that I guess we installed for the cell of the water to the county.
Yes, sir.
Those, those are operational.
They're installed and they're working.
Or do we have any type of maintenance program on those calibration?
Yeah, we calibrate them quarterly.
And that's being?
That's being done.
That's being performed? Right. And then, I know we talked about this, but can you, can you tell me, explain to me again? This is, we've already proved a lot better. But, just like we buy our sewer from the county, I know you went through this and Mike went through this as far as water. Why would it not be beneficial, I guess, to us to purchase our needed water from the county instead of, instead of doing this?
Essentially, there, there's a couple of answers. The most, the most obvious one is it's cost prohibitive. We would not only have to pay their one-time allocation fee and then their rate, whatever their rate is, and we give them the power to give us, to determine what the rate is. So their allocation fee is higher than ours. So we'd not only have to claw back ours at a lower rate, then we have to pay more for theirs. Mike went through this, I think, the last meeting or maybe two meetings ago. It's just cost prohibitive. We wouldn't, and we would lose the revenue we would gain from them and we end up paying. It becomes a, a, an economic nightmare to do it that way. And then you cede your growth rate to somebody else. They'll determine your water supply.
Along those same lines, um, the county has recently dramatically gone up on their sewer allocation fee. And typically, well, the plan now is to pass that on to the developers. It is my understanding, let the developers pay that. What is different about that scenario versus a water allocation? As far as passing that on to developers, or would it be a prohibitive number for the developers?
Oh, well, no, we would pass it on. We don't charge the, the develop, we charge the developers the same. That's what the system development fees are about.
For the, for the sewer, but will we pass the water allocation, if we had to buy water, would we pass that on to the developer also? And if not, it's kind of a similar situation. Why wouldn't we?
Well, in other word, well, to buy, say, a, a bulk million dollar, million gallons, whatever that cost would be, even though it's pretty hot. I'm not sure we could divide, we'd have to divide that amongst all the customers that are existing at this point. Cause it wouldn't be for, you'd have to go back and get it. Future development. Yeah, you, you would pass that along if it was for future development, but for existing customers, you'd have to figure a way to charge them.
But when we buy sewer allocation, we wouldn't go back and charge existing customers?
No, we don't, we don't go back and charge existing customers. It's only for future, because we already have the allocation in hand. So if I were, if we were to cede any of our water rights or water allocation to another entity, whether it was the county or whoever, we'd have to firm an allocation. And in doing so, we'd have to charge existing customers if that was the purpose. If the purpose was for growth, then we would, it would be a pass through.
For the new customers.
For the new customers, the development. But again, there's no guarantee you'll get the allocation.
Councilman, I think the answer to your question is there is no real difference. Yeah, if we, if we charge a allocation fee or whatever that fee is, it can be passed on to the developer the same way sewer can. No difference. Uh, it's just that we have control over that. And we have control over the allocation. So just like with East River, the people that were just here, um, we had a very difficult time getting that permitted for sewer. Because the county controlled the sewer and they controlled how much would be able to go into their lines. And frankly, we're not permitted yet for every phase. We're permitting it by phase, hoping that the county will catch up with its sewer out, sewer improvements and its new pump station over in that area. Our, the big issue for us with water is that we have that control instead of the county, so we can allocate it as we, we want to. But as far as passing along the fees, it is no different than sewer.
So we could do that if we elected to do that, if we moved forward, built the facility and wanted to charge that to development, developers. We could do that with our fees. I guess that's the answer to your question. I guess we could do that.
Are you saying charge an additional fee? We build the plant and just charge an additional fee for future development?
Correct. That's why I, I think we could do that.
What would be the worst case scenario if the county said they won't, won't, won't fire the water from us anymore?
Well, we, we did look at, they have a guaranteed buyer, not, you know, a payer, take or pay. And if they chose not to take any dollar beyond that, we still keep the fee they pay. The allocation fee is ours, whether, whether they buy it or not, we just would lose whatever the sales on the bulk. The, what, the, the two dollars and thirty-five cents per thousand gallons, we would lose whatever revenue that is. I don't know the effect on that. I think Mr. Beauchamp went through that with UFS. And he answered that question, if I recall, and I'm not sure, don't hold me. But he did say, uh, there would have to be a, a rate increase to recover that revenue. But then I think it was Dr. Barba put up, but we wouldn't need that revenue if they weren't buying the water. Uh, we, so there, there would be a loss of revenue, whether we need to make that up or not, would have to deal with rates. But I don't foresee, I don't know of anyone that would buy a lifetime season ticket rights at a ball stadium and then not buy the season tickets. You know, the reason they pay the allocation, because they're going to want it.
Alright, thank you, Ted. We'll move on now to, uh, business item number seven. Consideration and request for approval to accept the funding from NCDQ for the financing of the water plant project outlined in resolution number six seventy-two.
Alright gentlemen, we have just spoken at length about the water plant improvement project. So the details about how this project will get funded need, uh, perhaps, would like to get looked at a little closer as we have been trying. So looking at the funding details, namely what the project will cost, where the money is coming from, and how we make it balanced without incurring further debt, and what staff is specifically requesting. So first, how much will all this cost? The project has fixed costs that are due regardless of what is built. These costs include design services, traffic analysis, two separate rate analyses, permitting costs, archaeological findings, et cetera. If the loan is approved by law, the two percent closing cost cannot be covered by the loan. It is the borrower's responsibility to cover this fee. The cost of construction, including all four alternates, was under the fifteen million dollar figure. That was in the estimate of construction. The standard construction practice and one of the conditions of the loan is to have a five percent contingency based on the construction bid to be held in reserve should anything go wrong. During state review, the existing filter backwash pump was deemed too small to use, so a new pump will need, be needed. This was left out of the bid because it was not in the approved funding letter and we did not want to start the process from scratch. The SCADA system was purposefully left out of the bid because we wanted our existing service provider to handle all the upgrades and changes, thereby avoiding two separate SCADA systems. Also by contracting directly with our existing consultant, we avoid the contractor's markup on subcontracting. The previously mentioned generator upgrade from tier two to tier four is an associated cost, but is, it is a requirement of the EPA if the generator is to be used for load management. And this all totals to just under sixteen, uh, seventeen point six million dollars. So although we are speaking of a pretty large sum, we can get there in a reasonable fashion. We've already received three point two five million from Johnston County. We've been approved for a state revolving fund loan for twelve million and fifty thousand dollars. We have already budgeted in this year's budget, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars for water plant repair issues. We propose to use the one million, nine hundred and forty-eight thousand, five hundred dollars from the water fund fund balance, giving us the total of seventeen million, five ninety-eight, five. And that would cover the list of costs. Recall the debt service, which is now in a more favorable annual payment, will have its first payment due back in the fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three. This will occur after the Booker Derry Road loan was paid off from the water fund. So we talked about a lot of big numbers, so what do we do to make it work out? As you can see, the need to balance the project and obtain the complete project is to do two things. One, we need to repurpose the already budgeted three hundred and fifty thousand dollars to go into the water plant project fund. Currently, it was approved by council to be only used for equipment repair. Second, council will need to approve a one-time withdrawal of one million, nine hundred and forty-eight thousand, five hundred dollars from the water fund and place this amount into the water plant project fund. What effect will this have on our water fund? We are fortunate enough to have such a healthy fund balance, as mentioned earlier in the budget presentation, so that even with the withdrawal, we will still have a fund balance over seventy-five percent, which is a very healthy level. As part of the loan process, council will need to approve a funding resolution which accepts the loan from the NCDQ. So in order to fully fund this project, staff is asking for the following specific steps. Approve resolution six seventy-one, which accepts the loan from the NCDQ for the twelve million, fifty thousand. It further acknowledges the town will adhere to conditions of the loan, that the town manager will act as the town representative in future matters and authorizes him to fill out subsequent paperwork regarding the loan on behalf of the town, such as reimbursement requests, et cetera. And it reasserts that the town will abide by all state and federal financing laws. Staff is asking council to execute the loan package by mayoral signature. And as previously mentioned, staff is asking council to repurpose the already budgeted three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, place those funds into the water plant project fund, and approve the one-time withdrawal of the one million, nine hundred and forty-eight thousand, five hundred from the water fund and place that into the water project, project fund. Thank you for your time and your consideration in this matter, as we all help the town grow wisely and responsibly.
Alright, any questions for, for Ted or staff?
Can you go back to the page with, where it came up with seventeen and change in numbers again? And that fourteen, six ninety?
Yes, sir.
Getting there already, uh, and this might be a different generator, add alternate number four engine generator system and transfer.
Yeah, they add alternate, the generator, the alternate that was bid is a tier two generator. And if we want to use load management, we needed a tier four, and that's the cost of the upgrade.
So, the four fifty is for generators comparable to what we have, and it's an extra three hundred to upgrade to the tier four?
Yes, sir. And if you're asking the question, why would we do that and is it worth it? Uh, we ran the numbers, uh, last week and it, on load management, we save X amount every month and we went back and looked at it. And in about six years is the break even number. So presuming that the generator lasts longer than six years, then it's the wise thing to do in the long term, is to get the tier four and use it for load management. Because after six years or six point two, whatever the number was, it was just barely over six, we would then start saving money, you know, forever. And considering the generator we're replacing was a nineteen seventy model, I mean, if we're good for forty or fifty years, then it's the long-term right thing to do.
One other question, it's not really related to this. We currently have two sludge presses, don't we?
Yes, we do. We did get two screws.
Are we using all that capacity or are we selling any of that?
We're actually.
Or processing for other?
We are processing for Selma. We get a little bit every year. I don't know the exactness, uh, about every quarter, we get about ten thousand or twelve thousand. Does that sound right, Greg? Yeah, so about ten thousand a quarter for Selma. And we, we're advertising to anyone else who, uh, would, would need that service. We know that, uh, Harnett County has told us in emergency, if their normal processor doesn't, that they would give us a call.
And, but if we increase capacity to another two point one milli, million gallons, we would need another press for, just to accommodate that two point one? Or would we be sufficient now with the equipment we have? Or I'm just trying to?
Yeah, that, that is, because the reason it's an alter, right, the reason it's an alternate is, um, we do foresee the need, you know, in years to come, but it's not a pressing need today. And if it needed to be taken out, we could have. Um, but we do think as the, the water, when you make water, you make sludge, right? It's a, it's a one-to-one ratio. So as we produce more water, we will reach the, kind of the capacity of the, the current setup. And we would need a, a sister image, or mirror image sister setup next door in the same building, and that's what we're preparing to do.
Ted, could you go back and show us what it is that we needed to do? You had a list, and they're not listed in our packet, telling us what we need to do. You know, some of us are dense and we need instructions on what we actually need to do, step one, two, three, and this doesn't show us that. And so it's kind of, cause you, you listed more than just one thing you needed to do. You needed us to do these things and it's not listed in here in that order. That's why, this just said approve a resolution, and that's not what that says.
Well, approving the resolutions is the key, uh, thing. The others can be done at, at maybe a later date. But if you want to fund the whole of the project, then this is what, approving resolution six seventy-one would have to be done. And authorize and executing the proposed loan package by mayoral signature, because that was on the bottom of the page. They wanted, uh, Mayor Moore to sign off on it. Those are the two key things that must be done, and that's part of our milepost deadline. Repurposing the three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, I mean, we already had it budgeted, um, back for this year. It was just to, to round out and make everything balanced, the last two items. Um, so that, that's what I'm asking, um, to repurpose the three hundred and fifty thousand dollars and then approve the one-time withdrawal. So there's, there's four things essentially. One is approve the resolution. Two is, uh, ask the mayor to sign off on the package, repurpose the three fifty, and then approve the one-time withdrawal.
So I guess my question is, can that be done in the same motion or are they going to have to be required four separate motions? That's what I need to know. And, and Greg, I know sometimes budget items have to be individually listed. So that's what I'm saying, is that something individually has to be done or could it be done in one motion?
I would actually prefer to prepare budget amendments, um, redirecting the three fifty and the one-time withdrawal.
Okay, so you really, to your preferences, to only approve resolution six seventy-one?
And execute the package with, by letting the mayor sign off on it.
But do you have to have a motion for that?
Isn't that part of the resolution six seventy-one?
I don't know that it's specifically spelled out in the resolution.
I mean, I am a little afraid, but I mean, if the council, if the council, if the council does this, I'm going to sign it.
If you accept the loan, is that also executing it?
I wanted to be clear, you didn't want to get hung up on a technical.
A little hesitant, but I mean, if they directly decide it, I'm signing it. I'm not so sure there's a, a, a motion that's needed for me to sign the document.
Yeah.
And you can serve it, uh, and I will still break budget amendments for one year, thanks, councilman.
On advice of attorney, it can be done with one motion, but it's a, it's your pleasure if you wish to split it.
It was our intent, councilman, to make sure the council was aware of this money would need to be moved. So we want to make sure that you have, we have your approval to do it and then we'll bring a consent item with budget amendments at the next meeting.
And, and, and for clarification, I believe this should be resolution six seven-two, not six seven-one. Six seven-two is what's in our package.
I apologize.
So, Mr. Mayor, can I make a motion?
Yes, sir.
I'm going to make a motion that we approve resolution six seven two, uh, that accepts the loan, approves the town condition of the loan, authorizes the town manager, and reasserts the town abides by political rules, execute the proposed law, approve the repurposing, and approve the withdrawal of that funds. So motioned.
With it, with the mayor's signature.
It says execute the proposed list with the mayor's signature.
Thank you, Councilman.
Hand personal guarantee.
You got it.
Mayor's civil rights.
All right, I have a, a motion and a second to approve, as basically stated on the slide. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, gentlemen.
All right, that is our last item. Correctify.
Yep, that's on the, on the, council notes moved.
Now we'll move on to council members' comments, anyone wishing, make any comments?
Getting late.
Getting late.
I, I want to make this one comment, I want to make one comment, we, I was in Florida this past week, uh, visiting some family and friends, violating the governor's rule, but, um, the, um, the, I was going to say, though, that I was eating at, at several establishments, and I, I usually get water with lemon when I drink, eat my meals, and, um, the water was not very good. And my daughter said, "But daddy, remember, we live in Smithfield, where we have award-winning water." And I said, "You're absolutely right, sweetie." So I'm just saying, I appreciate, we sometimes take for granted that we do have proven, year after year, award-winning water, and I appreciate those in our town who work diligently to provide that, and, um, uh, so you can drink out of tap if you want to in Smithfield and get good water.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? So we did have the, uh, virtual tree lighting tonight, um, right before this meeting, so the, the, the town tree is now lit, that was on Facebook Live this evening. Um, due to COVID, um, we're not having a parade this year, but we do have a lot of other activities going on in Smithfield, so for the public, so if anyone's interested in all the activities that we have going on, you can visit smithfieldchristmas.com, and there is a listing of all the activities that we, we have going on, so, um, please help share that, that, that word. We'll have sleigh li, sleigh rides with Santa downtown, um, as well as a Santa sleigh. Santa has negotiated with the Smithfield Fire Department to chauffeur him around some neighborhoods in Smithfield, so to all the kids, young and old, be on the lookout for Santa to come through your neighborhood on a fire truck soon. Um, we also have, um, the decorate Smithfield Light Contest, so if there's anyone interested in decorating their, their homes or their businesses, please make sure that you, uh, register that, uh, with the town of Smithfield, um, and be in the running to, to win the top prize for the, the best decorated business or, or resident. And then, uh, I believe another one is that we have the Grinch's Stink Stink Stunk Toy Collection Drive that's going on as well, so, um, and, and many other activities that are scheduled, so again, um, you can visit smithfieldchristmas.com for all of that. So, thank you, that's all I have. Anybody else? Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, just want to name a few things, um, very quickly, just to, add a little bit of information on the things that you just mentioned. The toy drop, um, actually, the next two weekends is two big weekends for us, Saturday, December fifth, from nine to one, is the toy drop at Community Park, bring an unwrapped toy, drop it off. Uh, we have a lot of children this year that need assistance, so I ask our community to step up, stop out there, drop off a toy sometime this Saturday between nine and one. And the Santa Cruz that was mentioned is the following Saturday, which is December twelfth, from one to five, so Santa will be shoveling around in a fire truck, hitting every neighborhood in town, so look out for him then, um, play a little music outside, and I'm sure they'll stop and flash the lights at you, and, uh, bring merry wishes. Also wanted to bring the attention to the council that the splash pad out at Collins Park is complete, it's operational, it's a little cold to use it right now, but, um, we will be prepared for its operation once the weather warms up this summer. We will be reviewing, uh, parking for that, um, we may be coming to council as, as budget session to look to see if we need to add some type of parking pad out there as well. Um, the only other thing I have, very quickly, Mr. Mayor, is, uh, Equity Drive continues moving forward, a lot are, are being moved out there, um, we are finishing up phase one, uh, right now, and we believe we'll be getting phase two relatively quickly, which will be most of the F D R and, um, of both north and south Equity Drive. Looks real good out there, appreciate the patience of all the businesses out there that I know have been inconvenienced by this construction, but in the end, we're going to have a much better product for Smithfield and for everyone out there. Thank you very much, Merry Christmas to everyone, um, as we approach our holiday season.
Um, thank you, Mr. Manager, and, um, it's, uh, good, good to have you back, back in the office, Kane and all, I hope you continue to, to recover, sir. Um, at this time, I will entertain a motion to go into closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute one forty-three dash three eighteen dot eleven A four.
So move.
Motion and a second to go into closed session, and we will be going into closed session in this room, so I will ask the public to please exit at this time. Thank you very much.